Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:15. Good morning, everybody. Welcome again to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and to the meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Wednesday, May 8th, the year 2002. City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m., and we always invite the public to attend council meetings and participate. We can also be viewed live from home on your cable station, Channel 35. We can be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Burnson, Galander, Garcetti, Grul, Han, Holden, Labange, Ms. Cazzi, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley, Thomas, Vice, Zion, Padilla, ten members present, and a corner, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Before beginning with today's agenda, we do have a brief presentation. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Labange.
It's great about our opportunity to service when we have great community meetings and we listen to the public. I had one a few months ago, and the people from the art community were upset that we weren't doing enough for the arts. And I had a complaint from those in the Miracle Mile area, where the great county has all its great facilities, and those artists in the NoHo district of North Hollywood. Well, what I did is I put them both together, NoHo and those in the Miracle Mile, and out of that, the idea came for the creation of an artery. Artery that runs through the great Miracle Mile area, the county facilities through Hollywood, out through the Coigapass to NoHo. And I wanted to just salute the part of that dynamic duel, if I could use that Hollywood term. Pasquale Bitio from Park La Brea, who just had art in the park. Pasquale, come up here. I want to salute you with this commendation and present this to you in appreciation, because arts is part of the equation. Arts is part of the equation of a healthy and happy neighborhood. And also, I want to salute Mary Garcia from NoHo, who is a wonderful artist, who's a driving force in North Hollywood. Visit NoHo and you'll get a great experience. We salute you both on this day and wish you well, and we work harder. And, Mr. President, I thank you and members of council for this brief moment of introduction. Let's salute these great artists of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Chair recognizes Mr. Zion for a brief presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, we have interns that work for free for the city of L.A. And I have one with me today who's going to graduate from SC on May 10th, Jeff Scoban. His father is a commissioner with our transportation, Alan Scoban. He's also a reserved FBI sheriff, and his son, Jeff, is interned with my office, done a wonderful job in the capacity while he's been attending classes at SC. And as I stated, he'll graduate on May 10th from SC, which is just a couple of days from today. So he'll be leaving the services and pursuing a career where he'll make some real money. So his daddy won't have to support him anymore with all he's done for you. And you've been a wonderful asset to my office, and we appreciate all the work you've done on behalf of the people of the Third District. And I have a certificate of appreciation hereby presented to Jeff Scoban with sincere thanks for outstanding service to the people of the Third District as a City Hall intern. And may this be one of the many certificates you'll receive as your life blossoms out. And I know you're a commissioner by the county for what? Consumer Affairs. Supervisor Mike Antonovich appointed you as a commissioner of Consumer Affairs. So you're on the moving path into the arena of the real world. And Jeff, congratulations. If you want to say a few words, because I'm sure your daddy's going to be watching this tonight on television, and also your mom, Romy. Jeff Scoban.
I'd just like to commend all the members of the City Council and ask for the other president. You guys do a great job, and I enjoy watching you guys on Channel 35 all the time. So keep up the good work, and you guys do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. And tonight, you will see yourself on Channel 35. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
May have a career in television as well. Mr. Clerk, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Perry moves, and Mr. Labange seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Grul moves, and Mr. Zion seconds.
Mr. President, item number one on the agenda is a joint meeting with the CRA board.
Let's go through the agenda, call specials, and begin with item number one at that point. So we'll call item number one special.
Items numbers two through 12 on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have been held.
Items two through 12 now before us, public hearings have been held in committee. Members wishing to call any specials? Items two through 12?
Mr. President, I'd like to announce for the record, item number four, there is no ordinance on the file. The instruction from the committee is to request the city attorney prepare an ordinance. And also, on number, item number 11, you may wish to hold that on the desk, inasmuch as the committee did not have a public hearing on that matter, and we can hold it with the grouping that has not been held.
Okay. Items two through 12, with the exception of number 11, any specials? Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Item number two continued for a week, please.
Request to continue item number two for one week.
May 15th.
Mr. Labange. Item 10 called special by Mr. Labange. Then, members without objection, item two shall be continued, one week to May 15th. Other specials? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. Those are approved. Item number three is an ordinance, and there are 12 members present. That is approved as well. Next item?
Mr. President, items numbers 11, 13 through 19 on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have not been held. There is a motion that has been circulated amending item number 17.
Item number 17, let's call that special. Also have cards on items 13 and 19, let's call those special. And on the balance of the items, I do not have requests members of the public to be heard. We shall deem the public hearings open and closed, and consider them without objection. Members wishing to call any other specials? Items 11 and 13 through 19, Ms. Perry.
I'd like to call 19 special.
Item 19 called special by Ms. Perry. We also do have cards on that item. Any other specials? Any other specials? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. Those are approved. Mr. Pacheco.
Fourth with on number 18.
Fourth with on item 18, please.
Mr. President, items numbers 20, 21, and 22 are closed session items. Do you wish those to remain on the desk?
Let's hold those on the desk.
That brings you back to item number one called special, is the joint meeting with the CRA board.
Okay, item number one, if we can have the CRA board and staff come forward. And in the meantime, let me make an announcement that the presentation of the 2001 Career Service Awards has been moved to Friday, May 10th. The 2001 Career Service Awards will be this upcoming Friday, May 10th. Mr. Garcetti?
Can we do nine, fourth with, please, Mr. President?
Fourth with on item number nine. Ms. Grul, did you wish to be recognized at this time? After the presentation? Is all the necessary staff prepared to begin with item number one?
We're short one commissioner.
We're short one commissioner. Is that commissioner in chambers?
Yes. He's a short commissioner.
Ah, there he is, the chairman. He's walking down the aisle. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a continued joint meeting of the Los Angeles City Council and the Board of Commissioners of the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Los Angeles to consider the approval and adoption of the proposed redevelopment to consider the approval and adoption of the proposed redevelopment plan for the City Center Redevelopment Project, which had been continued from May 1st, 2002. The redevelopment plan is proposed to be approved and adopted pursuant to the community redevelopment law of the state of California. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll of the members of the City Council and the Community Redevelopment Agency?
City Council, Bernson, Glanter, Garcetti, Gruehl, Hahn, Holden, Labange, Ms. Causi, Pacheco, Perry, Ridley, Reyes, Ridley, Thomas, Weiss, Zine, Padilla, 13 members present and a quorum, Mr. President. As far as the CRA Commissioners, Farrar, Hutton, Arneilis, Ring, Schaefer, Wu, three members present and a quorum.
Thank you very much. Members, last Wednesday on May 1st, 2002, the agency and the City Council held a joint public hearing to consider the approval and adoption of the proposed redevelopment plan for the City Center Redevelopment Project. At that time, the agency and City Council considered testimony presented to us on the proposed City Center Redevelopment Plan. Members and Commissioners, let me also advise you, I have received speaker cards for this item today. Since public hearing has been held, we are in compliance. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearing. At that time, the agency received three written objections concerning the proposed City Center Redevelopment Plan. Pursuant to law, the City Council must consider the written objections and adopt written findings responding to the written objections prior to approving and adopting the redevelopment plan. Therefore, the agency and City Council closed the public hearing last week and continued the joint public meeting to today for the purpose of considering and responding to written objections received prior to or at the May 1st, 2002 joint public hearing. Mr. Charlin, does staff wish to respond at this time to the written objections received prior to or at the May 1st, 2002 joint public hearing?
Yes. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this morning. Following the public hearing last week, I would like to take this opportunity to respond to the comments made. The agency has prepared written responses to three written objections, and at today's joint public meeting, the council will consider adopting the written responses. In addition, I would like to submit into the record the following documents, which have been utilized by staff in their consultation with the county and in responding to the written objections. A copy of each of these documents has been distributed to each City Council member and to each Commissioner, as well as to the city clerk. A document entitled Convention Center Area Task Force Report on the Los Angeles Convention Center Expansion Project, November 1992. Report by PKF Consulting entitled Headquarters Convention Hotel Economic Feasibility Study, February 1999. PKF Consulting Response to Sedway Consulting, dated May 7th, 2002. Los Angeles Times articles related to the Convention Center. Convention Bureau Call to Explain Bookings Bonuses, May 2nd, 2002. Bonuses Paid for Canceled Events, April 29th, 2002. Tourism Rebounding in California, April 29th, 2002. LA's Wide Open Space, April 10th, 2002. Officials Target Visitors Bureau, April 7th, 2002. A study by Economic Research Associates entitled Overview of the Economic and Fiscal Impacts of the Los Angeles Sports and Entertainment District, April 2002. Economic Research Associates, a study entitled Beneficial Economic Impacts of Development of the Los Angeles Sports and Entertainment District, dated April 25th, 2002. Los Angeles County Economic Development Corporation Letter Regarding Economic Importance of a Headquarters Hotel at the Convention Center, April 12th, 2002. Colliers International Houston Office Market, Central Business District, Third Quarter, 2001. Urban Land Archives, Article by Paul Levy, Central City Philadelphia, Redefining Downtown, October 1995. Urban Land Archives, Article by Charles Lockwood, Houston Turnaround, or Houston's Turn, February 2000. Cat's Hollis Commentary on the Continuity of Revitalization, April 30th, 2002. Response Letter to Councilman Nick Pacheco, dated May 2nd, 2002. There are several issues that have been raised by members of the downtown community and by the county of Los Angeles. The first is the agency's ability to adopt a new redevelopment plan, given the Bernardi judgment. The agency has responded twice to the county that neither the Bernardi judgment nor the tax increment cap impeaches the city of Los Angeles's authority under the community redevelopment law to continue its attempts to eliminate blight from the property. Neither the Bernardi judgment nor the tax increment cap affects the real property itself within the Central Business District project. Rather, they affect the agency's ability to receive tax increment under the CBD redevelopment project. The cap in the CBD project has been reached, and the agency is not receiving any tax increment from that project. That increment is flowing and will continue to flow to the county and other taxing entities. Second, the county has objected to the inclusion of the Staples Center parking lots in the new city center. To put it into context, the county is objecting to 30 out of 879 acres. These 30 acres are necessary for the effective redevelopment of the project area. It was never the agency's intent to leave these parking lots in their interim use. The use of these parcels as parking lots is not the highest and best use of the properties and reflects the fact the redevelopment is a phased process. The first step was to acquire and assemble land. The second step is to develop the property. Agency staff has consulted with the county on this issue for several months and has provided the county CAO staff with vast amounts of documentation and evidence to support this contention, some of which I listed and provided to the City Council and Board of Commissioners as well. The issue raised by the social service providers with regard to the deletion of language that reaffirms their activities in the new city center project area has been addressed. As we've been asked by Councilmember Perry to include the language in the ordinance, and we have done so, the agency firmly believes that the difficult issue of homelessness has to be addressed by the provision of housing, jobs, and other life opportunities and support systems. The social service providers are our partners in responding to these needs. Lastly, Mr. Bonar of the Skid Row Housing Trust objected to the plan. He indicated that the plan failed to recognize the unique population of the east side of downtown Los Angeles, and that the plan's definition of affordability failed to adequately address this element of the community, which is uniquely and dramatically very low income. In addition to the response provided as an attachment to the resolution, I would like to state that the plan does recognize the unique character of the central city residents and Skid Row community and the need for very low-income housing. The project objectives set forth in Section 105 of the redevelopment plan, the enabling language in Section 411 of the redevelopment plan, and the goals and objectives for the City Center Redevelopment Plan contained in the ordinance adopting the project provide adequate authority for the types of projects and programs that would serve the central city population. In addition, Section 409.2 of the plan makes specific reference to improving and preserving the community supply of housing available at affordable costs to extremely low-income households, in addition to moderate, low, and very low-income households. The Redevelopment Agency has already created 95% of the 4,000 units of very low-income housing in the central city area. The agency has historically exhibited its commitment to making lives better in the central city community and to ensuring the provision of safe, sanitary, and decent housing for all income segments. I trust that these points adequately respond to the issues that have been raised by the public and by members of the City Council. I thank you for consideration of this plan.
Mr. President, before we go forward, just so that the record, the minutes reflect that Commissioner Wu is not here, he recused himself and, because he owns property in the proposed boundaries, and we have introduced into the record a written disclosure pursuant to the redevelopment law.
Thank you very much, Mr. Council. Are there any final questions or comments by the members of the City Council or the agency commissioners, beginning with Ms. Perry?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to take a moment to make a statement on the record. I'm pleased to be here again today to finish this process today, and we have had much success in the Central Business District, and this is the next generation. Despite the successes in the Central Business District, we now have to turn to redeveloping and restoring and reinvigorating the historic core, the Toy District, key portions of the Fashion District, Skid Row, and South Park. These areas remain in dire need of redevelopment. These areas are included in the proposed City Center Redevelopment Project that is the subject of today's action before you. As stated before, the main goals of this redevelopment project include creation of housing for all people at all income levels, more specifically for those who are homeless with dual diagnosis, elderly people, people who are middle-income, lower-income, upper-income. A diverse economic base must be created to sustain our downtown for the rest of the benefit for the benefit for the rest of the city, to develop new jobs and new business opportunities, to deliver services to address our social, medical, and economic needs of central city residents, to adaptively reuse and preserve some of our greatest assets, and to assist and improve the quality of life and reduce homelessness for those who have been left behind. This new redevelopment project will create thousands of new jobs and additional retail, commercial, and industrial uses. Redevelopment from this project is expected to add up to 12,900 new housing units, which would allow for an increase in the number of residents downtown, increase our consumer base in downtown Los Angeles, and I would expect that a minimum of those units at 3,400 would be affordable, but I expect us to exceed that and will advocate for that. Additional housing for those who work downtown would reduce the need for dependence on automobiles, reducing vehicle trips on our freeways, and improve our air quality. But I want to note most especially that many of the housing units will be developed for those with special needs, those who are homeless or formerly homeless, and will help to address the city's critical shortage of affordable housing, while others will provide new housing choices for those who are lower and middle-income. Other goals of this redevelopment project will be the reduction of homelessness by providing alternative housing opportunities and addressing those social and medical and economic needs, through providing revenues to create facilities that provide job training, counseling, education, transitional housing, permanent housing, as well as shelter beds. And I want to say something in response to the social service providers last week. I had asked the agency staff to rewrite the ordinance before you today to include the goal which had previously been stricken, a goal reaffirming the agency and the city's commitment to support and encourage the development of social services with special consideration given to participating in projects, including community-based projects that serve special-needs populations such as runaways, the homeless, those with dual diagnosis, senior citizens, and to provide family support, child and elder care, and other social services as needed. I would also like to add that I support the inclusion of four parking lots around Staples Arena in the proposed project area. Inclusion of these sites is necessary to assure that successful redevelopment can take place. These lots are part of a phased development. Effective redevelopment requires that there be incremental approaches such as property acquisition, relocation, demolition, and perhaps interim uses, and then the actual development once financing has been determined. It is evident that the four parking lot parcels in their current state do not represent the highest and best use of these sites. Part of the development to take place on these sites is the long overdue and long-awaited Convention Center Headquarters Hotel that will work towards the benefit of the entire city of Los Angeles. It will enable us to attract many more conventions to the city and provide many more job opportunities, particularly for those who are unskilled. Reports dating back to 1992 indicate that this hotel is absolutely critical, not only to the success of the Convention Center, but to the overall redevelopment of the area. Without the development of a Convention Center hotel, the city's existing investment in the Convention Center will be impaired. The positive spillover effect of the development of a 1,200 to 1,300-room hotel would include the creation of substantial employment opportunities in the hotel, as well as up to two to three, even more, additional hotels that would be expected to be developed once a convention hotel is in use, as well as the tremendous retail ventures and jobs that would result from that. Finally, there will be a substantial residential component as part of this project. Approximately 800 housing units and additional retail and restaurant uses generated by this mixed-use development will service not only the Convention Center, but the entire community. Without a doubt, inclusion of these four parking lot parcels will benefit both the county of Los Angeles and the city of Los Angeles. For all the reasons I have stated, I support this plan that is before us today, and I would urge my colleagues to do likewise. And I'm pleased that the agency was able to respond to this challenge and move swiftly and boldly in this new chapter in the history of our redevelopment downtown Los Angeles.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Mr. Pacheco.
I'm sorry, but I just wanted to, Mr. President, ask some questions regarding, have we gotten written report backs on the county lawsuit in terms of our assessment, in terms of its viability? Do we have a written report from the CRA?
You're referring to the county's position, their legal position?
Yeah, do we have a CRA analysis of it that I can review? Or do we have the city? And then the second thing is, I was reading the Daily News, and Mr. Bernson had commented that even if there was a secession that it wouldn't impact the Valley, do we have that in writing so that I can look at that?
I'm told that the first is in our documents, a written response.
Okay, good.
With regard to our legal position.
Great. And then the secession issue?
We haven't dealt with the secession issue.
All right. That's all I had, Mr. President.
Ms. Gruehl.
I have a couple of questions. As many of you know, I campaigned on making sure the Valley got its fair share, and there's been a lot of questions from people about how this impacts, how tax increment works, and as well as the San Fernando Valley, its opportunity to have redevelopment areas. And so, just a couple of questions. One, if someone could clearly explain to all of us, and I think the people who are watching, about what impact this designation of downtown, amendment to the downtown redevelopment project, how it impacts tax revenues for the rest of the city of Los Angeles, and specifically, you know, the San Fernando Valley. And secondly, activities that have been held in the San Fernando Valley relative to tax increment dollars or redevelopment areas specifically. And then lastly, the third question being relative to the cap issue raised by the county of Los Angeles and how we specifically can respond to that by the legal issues. Again, I think the concern by myself and many of my colleagues is making sure that whatever activities happen in the city of Los Angeles, that the Valley is getting its fair share, and that this does not negatively impact on our San Fernando Valley. So if you could address those questions, please.
If I may, and perhaps I can start off and then have either Mr. Charlin or Mr. Spivak take over at any appropriate time. My name is Dove Lesel. I'm an Assistant City Attorney with the City Attorney's Office. Your first question was the impact on tax revenue projects generally for the city as well as the San Fernando Valley. In any redevelopment project area, the tax increment structure is prepositioned on the assumption that the tax increment will exist only because of the activities of the Redevelopment Agency. And so, part of the findings made both by the agency board and by the City Council in any redevelopment project area is that by themselves, these areas will not be able to turn around the existing blight. And if they do not do that, there will be no increase in property tax base in those areas. And so, the property tax generated is property tax that would otherwise not exist, and it needs to be utilized with two minor exceptions within the geographic area of those projects. So your second question, which is, what about redevelopment activities in the Valley? Any redevelopment plan in the Valley similarly would generate tax increment based on the agency and city's activities within that redevelopment project area. Again, this tax increment is money that would not otherwise exist but for these activities. And the money generated in the Valley in redevelopment project areas must be spent in those redevelopment project areas in the Valley. Similarly, the project that came before you recently, Pacific Corridors in San Pedro, the money generated from that as tax increment will remain in the San Pedro redevelopment project area. project area. That's what the law provides.
So the tax increment dollars, again, this is something I'm a little familiar with, but I'm not sure everyone else and the people who are listening today is about that new tax -- these are new tax dollars that are being increased based on investment in that community.
Correct.
Therefore, you're not taking away necessarily the money, it is increasing the tax base.
Absolutely.
And at what point does that tax -- I'm sorry to interrupt you, but what point does the tax increment dollars in essence, if you reach a final level that they are now millions of dollars 10 years from now, does then that revenue get shared with the rest of the city of Los Angeles?
Yes.
After a certain period of time?
There are actually three parts -- the answer is a three-part answer. Number one, all of the property tax presently generated in that area continues to the taxing agencies. So the county will collect it, and they will disperse it, they will keep their share, they will disperse it to the city, et cetera, as it is right now. So the tax increment is only from this base year onward. This is future dollars that may not exist except for the redevelopment efforts. Secondly, under a state change of the law several years ago entitled AB 1290, a certain percentage of the tax increment itself, 20% to start with, will go to the taxing entities. And the state recognized that, as oftentimes people say, as we do redevelopment and we do new construction, et cetera, it does impact the county, the schools, et cetera, and why should they lose out when all this tax increment goes to the redevelopment agency? And so the state several years ago took action to correct that so that a certain percentage of that tax increment and an ever-increasing percent goes back to the taxing entities. Number three, there is a date limit on how long a redevelopment project can exist. And so at some point, the assumption is that once we reach that time or sooner, if the City Council and agency wish, and they feel that all the blight has been eliminated, the project ends, just like the Central Business District, it ends, and at that point, all of the, what used to be tax increment now proceeds to go to all the taxing entities.
And then the last question, so that's the county question, the answer to the county's issue, that their lawsuit.
Oh, the cap.
Yes.
The Bernardi settlement that was entered into back in the late '70s was a stipulated settlement on, both on the amount of money that could be removed from or under the CBD redevelopment project area plan, as well as certain things that the agency needed to do and certain things that the agency was not able to do. This was a fairly comprehensive settlement. The settlement applies to the plan itself. It does not apply to the land. And so, the idea was that under the plan originally, the agency would have been able to take out as much tax increment as could be generated from or under the CBD plan. As a result of the Bernardi settlement that was entered into, $750 million was the maximum. That will not be exceeded under the plan. That plan has now been modified and is basically ended. There are few parts left to the plan. We have not been taking any money out of the plan as tax increment for several years now. All of that money has been going to the county, the city, the school district, et cetera. What we are creating now is a brand-new redevelopment project area with a brand-new plan. It's a brand-new tax base, which would be this year, and it would be future tax increment. The redevelopment law very clearly points out that an agency can both amend plans or create new plans if there is a showing and findings that blight continues. And the idea is, the same as the entire redevelopment scheme is put into the Health and Safety Code, the idea is to allow a city to continue with the redevelopment of an area, to continue fighting blight, and to hopefully make life better for all of the residents in that area.
One last question, I have a few less than a minute on my time here, but a question relative to what we can fund and the tax increment dollars, because there has been some concern about what it is we're actually going to fund with these tax increment dollars. And so, two questions, what's allowable under that, and two, what's the process? Does it come back to the City Council? My assumption is it goes to the CRA board and then comes to the City Council for approval so that if there are concerns about public dollars being used to subsidize something that we do not feel is appropriate, we will have an opportunity at that time to also have questions relative to that.
Absolutely. The main purpose of the tax increment is to fund, if you will, bricks and mortars. It is to create the infrastructure in an area to build buildings, low-income housing, other structures to turn around the blight. In some cases, the land has been cut up in small parcels, there are owners maybe of buildings that are falling down that but for redevelopment, we would not be able to deal with those problems. Any expenditure of funds more than $25,000 by the CRA comes to this City Council for approval, absolutely. And the City Council has an absolute veto over all expenditures of tax increment by the redevelopment agency.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. And colleagues, I want to say before I ask my questions, I want to make this very clear to everyone on this council and to everyone at this table. I support redevelopment of downtown. I support each and every one of the goals that my colleague Jan Perry identified as reasons we ought to revitalize this area of downtown. I want to make that very clear. I have several questions that I want addressed before I vote on this matter. I want good, solid answers. With all due respect to council, I want better answers than Ms. Gruehl was just given about the cost. And I'm going to give you four -- if I could, if people could be quiet, please, Mr. President. I have four separate sets of questions. I want good answers to all of them. First, I'll give you the categories. Number one, CRA. Number two, market economics questions. Number three, fiscal responsibility questions. And number four, process. First, number one, CRA issues. Many people, many people say that the CRA is not up to this job, that the CRA's past experience demonstrates that the CRA should not be trusted for another 20 years to do something this critical and this important and this big. People have raised serious questions, frankly, about the ability of the CRA to be up to this task. I want a direct answer to those series of questions. Number two, market and economics issues. I understand the CRA can do this work. I understand that. But what's really missing is an understanding, and feel free to educate me, about whether the market could do some of this work in the absence of government. Because right now, we are seeing a resurgence of downtown. We're seeing a revitalization. We have the Staples Project on the decks, and we have a lot more coming. So I understand maybe it could be redeveloped better with government, but has there been an analysis of what could be done without government? And has that been sufficiently brought to public light? Number three, fiscal responsibility. I want to know in dollars and cents exactly how much this will cost. I want to know the numbers. Don't tell me this business about the tax increment, because I don't buy that, because downtown is coming back, and the tax increment is going to go up over the next 20 years if we do not do this project. So let's have some numbers out there about what this will cost. And finally, process. This matter has not gone through a council committee. I do not understand why it has not and why it should not. There are many economists in the community, many academics, many experts, people from the Anderson School, from Pepperdine, from other places, who could and should weigh in on this? Why have they not weighed in? Why wouldn't it benefit all of us to have them weigh in either here or in committee? On Mr. Pacheco's question about the legal issues raised by the county, do we have a formal written opinion from the City Attorney's Office on that issue? If not, should we have one before we proceed? Those are my questions, and I would appreciate solid answers to all of them.
Let me start with some of it. First, I want to tell you that my own experience with the CRA has been for approximately three years. I am hardly Pollyannaish about the CRA, but I have seen what this agency is capable of doing. I have learned an awful lot about what it has done in the past. I think very few recognize that some of the most important developments, both large and small, would not have occurred without the CRA. Mr. Spivak can provide further illustrations, particularly with downtown. Furthermore, this agency has been strengthened in the last few years. It has very, very talented employees. It is well-organized. We know we can operate better, but it has the capability of dealing with this. With regard to the market issues, we are very careful not to extend ourselves in areas that the market, that we believe the market will solve the problems on its own. We are very concerned that we operate only within the proper legal definitions of blight and is necessary for the best impact for an area. We have cut out a lot of areas from this plan that we initially had in it because we saw that the market was operating on its own. We are not interested in being involved in those areas.
The question about the market is, do we need the CRA to revitalize this part of downtown? Isn't downtown, as, I mean, many suggest downtown is coming back right now. To what extent, will it come back? To what extent do we know? Do we have economic reports? Do we have positions from experts? To what extent can we predict that downtown will come back without the participation of government? Why must government be involved here?
Let me first start.
I sound like a Republican, I'm not, but why?
A lot of the developments that people are seeing are happening because of the support of the CRA. I'll let Don explain a little further.
Thank you, Don Spivak from the Redevelopment Agency. The part of the report to council is the analysis of the conditions of blight, the physical blight and the economic blight. And there are some very substantial sets of details of the blighting conditions that exist. One of the findings, as Mr. Charlin mentioned, that has to be made by the council is that the private sector on its own and the public sector on its own cannot achieve the redevelopment of an area without the tools of redevelopment. So those findings, in fact, do have to be made. But there are conditions, both physical and economic, that preclude the private sector from operating on its own. And these include in substantial portions of the historic core, South Park, and the industrial areas of downtown, the fact that buildings have been previously built to the lot line on very small lots. There is not the ability to incorporate circulation or parking that is needed to make these sites viable. There is a substantial portion of these buildings that are physically obsolete. They are on lots that are undersized and without the ability to assemble them, it is not possible to put modern buildings on a number of these parcels. Because of fragmented ownership, in many cases absentee ownership, it is virtually impossible for the private sector on its own to accomplish the assembly of these particular parcels. There are substantial areas in which the rights-of-way are simply not adequate for the circulation of vehicles, industrial areas in which trucks cannot circulate, in which there is no place for loading and unloading other than by blocking streets. The private sector on its own cannot handle the inadequacies of the street system. Many of the lots are irregularly shaped because they were built on a street system that kind of grew over the years in the early part of the previous century or even in the prior century. They were built around railroad tracks that no longer exist, and the street system is simply where the railroad tracks were pulled up. So there is not adequate access to a number of these properties. Those are a number of the physical conditions. There are substantial documentations of the conditions of blight included in two blight surveys that are in the report and summarized in the report. There are additional economic conditions that were identified in the response, in the report. Lease rates tend to be substantially lower in this area than they are in many areas of the city, and many of them are stagnant. And it's because of the need for the buildings to be rehabilitated or reconstructed. Rent levels are not adequate to support that renovation or reconstruction. Property values are depreciated. They continue to be depreciated. So there are a number of very specific conditions, all of which are laid out in very substantial detail in the report to council.
I might be able to answer as to the process. I think part of the question may have been why, what kind of public hearings, et cetera, have been held on this matter to make sure that all members of the community are aware that this project is going through. For whatever reason, the, over the years, the redevelopment process has been such that it has gone directly into the City Council. It oftentimes has to go into City Council several times, and it was felt that in order to move the process along in a timely fashion because of the deadlines of the base year, that the City Council decided not to have it go through the committee system, but rather to come directly into the City Council each time an action was necessary.
Is there any reason it couldn't go to committee this time?
In order to, in order to meet the deadlines for the base year, this plan must be adopted within the next, I believe, week or so. Is it May the 19th? If we do not, if the plan is not adopted by that date, then the assumptions have to be reworked, and the base year will be put over for an entire year. I believe May the 19th. Excuse me, Ms. Hammond tells me it's the 17th. She's the keeper of my calendar.
Can somebody, hello, Mr. President? With respect to this process question, I think Mr. Weiss has raised the serious issue here with respect to process. I myself raised that issue as the new and incoming chairman of the Community Redevelopment Agency, and I would like to have in the record here a recitation as to what I think was, quite frankly, an elaborate and long and thorough process. And I've asked Mr. LaSalle to, in response to these serious process concerns, to actually make the record with respect to the process which was observed, because I had similar questions, and I think it's important for those of us, as Mr. Weiss and I are new to our positions here, to know the significant process that has gone on prior to my being here as chairman and prior to this, many members of this council. So if Mr. LaSalle could share that process with council, I think you would be, as I am, significantly more comfortable with the fact that this is not just something people thought of yesterday and tried to spring on everybody at the last minute.
Before Mr. LaSalle speaks, Mr. Chairman, I think an important distinction to recognize is the process as a policy matter, separate and apart from this particular project, because the process we're following is a process that has been followed legally, historically, and otherwise.
And I think Mr. LaSalle, being the general counsel for the agency over a number of years, is prepared to address both of those questions. One, with respect to the statutory compliance, and two, with respect to the elaborate process that has in fact been observed here.
Mr. LaSalle?
Yes. Ms. Hammond has also reminded me that this matter apparently may have gone to committee once or twice, but that the policy of expediting this matter was approved by the City Council in a motion to expedite on October 24th of last year. Just so that the record reflects that. With regard to other opportunities for the public to provide input into this matter, there is a PAC that was formed late last year. There were public notice in the area notifying all residents, businesses, community organizations that the PAC would be forming. The PAC The PAC was elected and was confirmed by the council in its process. It started in last November, and I am advised by the staff that they have been meeting once or twice a month, excuse me, twice a month and sometimes more, for this entire period of time providing input. The PAC under state law includes residents that are owners and occupants of the property, residents who are tenants in the properties in the proposed central city, community organizations, including those who work with homeless service providers, et cetera, as well as businesses. In addition, this matter has been to the planning commission. It has been to the city's planning commission not once, not twice, but actually three times, the first time being October of 2000, when this first came through as one large plan with the area east of San Pedro, which now is going to move forward as a separate plan as part of the industrial downtown sector of the city. It came back to the planning commission for public hearing in October of 2001, when this was, when the larger plan was formally split into two, and then again it went back to the planning commission for public hearing in April of 2000, which would be last month. In addition, the public notices that were done were advertised in various newspapers, including the Downtown News, La Opinión, and the LA Times. And the PAC's meetings, which were at least bimonthly, were advertised and noticed since the PAC is subject to the Brown Act, like the agency board and the city council. Again, providing opportunities for all people, whether they reside within the project, the proposed project area, or outside of the project area, to have notice and to attend. These are all open meetings. Last but not least, there was an EIR, Environmental Impact Report, prepared for this. It went through the full process. It went to the board. It had public hearings and public input. And just for the record, of course, at your last meeting, we had a fairly large turnout of people who had heard about this and who gave us their input, as well as letters that we received.
I appreciate that, and that's about public process. What I'm really after is a discussion of deliberative process by this body so that this body has as much information and hears competing economic points of view so it can make a difficult public policy question. I appreciate what the answer you just gave. That's a different sort of process, as Mr. Padilla mentioned. The question that has not been answered yet is my final question, which is cost. Please do not tell me that it doesn't cost anything because this increment will only happen if we redevelop. Please tell me and tell the people of this city exactly what it will cost, because we're making a decision to spend public resources here. What is the best estimate you can give us, the county, the school district, what have you, of what the cost will be? And there are different economic ways to analyze this. There's opportunity costs, there's taxes. Give us all the numbers.
Mr. Weiss, are there any other of your questions that they haven't responded to?
That's the last question that I'd like to answer, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Yes, if I could refer to the report to council, there is a section in the report to council which is a very detailed work program. There is an overall work program for the 30-year period, and there is also an initial work program for the first five years that appears beginning on page 95 of the report to council. The economic development program, which includes site assemblage for development of mixed-use residential and open space projects, including underutilized parcels for commercial and residential projects, assistance of that type, rehabilitation and beautification of commercial storefronts and facades on historic buildings, development of a public parking program to provide additional safe and convenient facilities for commercial housing developments, adaptive reuse plans, assistance for adaptive reuse, day laborer job centers, and a number of other things, is estimated over 30 years to be $667 million. There is a housing program which provides for the construction of 6,900 new housing units, of which at least 25% are affordable, and the rehabilitation and conversion of 5,240 housing units in existing buildings, mostly adaptive reuse, again, a minimum of which 25% would be affordable. The housing program is estimated to cost $1.1 billion. There is a public infrastructure program, construction of rights-of-way, sidewalk curb, gutter improvements, pedestrian enhancements, best pocket parks, open space facilities, realignment of intersections that are offset, historic trolley system, construction of right-of-way improvements to certain freeway ramps, and working with MTA and others on a wayfinding program, a 30-year estimate of $260 million. Community facilities, including working with the Los Angeles Unified School District to improve the Ninth Street School, the only school currently within the downtown, development of primary school facilities for the growing downtown residential community in cooperation with LAUSD, expansion of an existing pediatric center and health facilities and providing opportunities for their increased services, acquisition of property for child, elderly, and daycare facilities, implementation of a public art program using the Cultural Trust Fund, cultural facilities and public safety facilities, including a community police drop-in center and fire safety stations, a total of $98.5 million. A homeless reduction program, which includes the rehabilitation of 1,500 single-room occupancy residential units, relocation and modernization of homeless service facilities, studies to develop programs and facilities to further the goal of reducing homelessness, an adult education and retraining center in schools, acquisition of property for mental health service facilities and expansion of those facilities providing service to the homeless, design and construction of San Julian Commons, which is a service and open space facility in the Central City East Community, and a community court, total of homeless reduction services, $150 million. The total work program is estimated at $2.3 billion if all of these projects are carried out over the 30-year period, assuming funding, in fact, is available to do that.
Thank you very much. Chair recognizes as the next speaker, Mr. Zine.
I've been asked by my distinguished colleague, Jan Perry, to speak, and I will follow her.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. I would be willing to switch places with him so that he can take my place in order. Since our discussion has started this morning, we've had some additional information that's come to our attention today, and I wanted to ask Mr. Charlin if he could give me, or give the body some advice on this. Gilda Haas is here from the Figueroa Corridor Economic Development Commission and has raised some concerns, and in an effort to respond to and address her concerns, I wanted to ask if we can do the following today. Number one, obviously, I would like to get the plan approved today. But the second part of this solution is to take a look and review the five-year implementation plan with specific review and discussion, consideration on the relocation opportunities, relocation issues, and then secondarily, on job training, job creation, development, and job placement as it relates to the five-year implementation plan and to relocation. And the third part of that is to have public hearings conducted through the Redevelopment Agency and to make sure that we include our elected PAC as they were part of the public process. Is this something that we can accomplish?
Yes, we'll do it.
Oh, all right. Was it that easy? Okay, that was painless. I'll give my additional time to Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Councilmember Perry. I could also add replacement as part of that whole dynamic of making sure we're going in a partnership along with Councilmember Perry's office and the Figueroa Corridor advocates, being that there are some real concerns about how we're dealing with the lineage of issues that was just defined by the Councilmember Perry.
Mr. Reyes, this is on Mr. Zine's time still?
Okay, well, he's got, he's got one more minute. No, I'm just kidding. Can we do that? Yes?
Yes, we'll do that.
Okay.
Mr. President, I, as the newly-elected chairman of the Community Redevelopment Commission, I'd like to address myself specifically to some of the, to the very first question that Mr. Weiss raised, which is, is the CRA up to the task? I think that's a really good question. I think I addressed myself to that when we first, when I first agreed to serve as chairman and as elected chairman here, as to what the CRA can do and what it can't do, and basically looking specifically at its track record. I would like to say this, that in the course of my review, two things are true. One is things that I would say, most people here would say, the agency does in fact have a lot of good examples of things it's done and a lot of examples that are things it could have done better. I recall several times before, this council in the last five years had been a consideration of simply abolishing this board of commissioners and having the city council itself serve as the, as the redevelopment agency. That's true in little bitty cities, and it's certainly always an option here. I would also like to say that with respect to the agency itself, whether or not it is, it is governed pursuant to its current status by a commission such as ourselves or by the council, my review of the California Redevelopment Act gives me confidence that that act gives a redevelopment agency powers that this city does not independently have and need to be exercised with respect to the blight areas and clearance, whether by this governance or by that. And for that reason, I think whether or not the CRA is up to the task with its current governance, I'm hoping we can prove to you that we are. Whether or not it is, the agency itself has statutory powers that this city needs in order to deal with these blighted issues, with these issues of homelessness. Now, I would also like to say, in response to the comments of Ms. Perry, is that we have gotten specific guidance from the mayor from the day we were interviewed for this position, that a primary emphasis of this agency for at least the remaining of this mayor's term, and these commissioners are here to reflect that, is to deal with the issue of homelessness and to deal with the issue of affordable housing and replacement housing. I think those are powers the agency alone has, to condemn property and to say, this parking lot, next week is going to be a housing project. We alone, as an agency, have those powers. I'd like to at least have this new board have an opportunity to prove ourselves to council that we're up to the task. I appreciate your question. I think it's a good one, and I'd like just a chance to prove that we can do it.
Thank you very much. I don't want to detract too far from the order of speakers. And Mr. Zine, you still have some time left, but before, before you begin, I do want to make an introduction. We do have the interim chief of the Los Angeles Police Department, Chief Pomeroy, with us. Please welcome to chambers.
Am I supposed to say something now? I'll only say that I recognize that I have 15 more bosses in addition to five or six across the street, so I'm reporting in. I'm happy to be home and I'm looking forward to working with this grand assembly. I have, the council members have always treated me very well, and I'm anxious to continue working with them for the next few months.
Well, we're glad to have you. Mr. Labusch.
I worked with him when he was the captain at Wilshire many, 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 many years ago and all through the ranks, and then he worked very diligently in the city's behalf when I was up at Water and Power, as you were camped away and working with all the agencies on the dissent decree, and I just wanted to wish you well and know that all of us want you to be successful, because when the Los Angeles Police Department is successful, the city's successful. So I want to thank you for coming back from the Big Sky Country and hope you find a spot in downtown, somewhere where they're working on, so your commute is short to Parker Center. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zine?
Is this on CRA or is this on Chief Pomeroy? Let's do Chief Pomeroy. Chief Pomeroy, both members of the LAPD for many years. You have a son on the department. I have a son on the department, and I want to pledge a support to help during this time of transition, and I know that you are more than capable of handling it with your 31 years. I know you've left Big Sky Country for a period of time, and I've been to Big Sky Country, and it's a whole different environment, but you're going to get the support you need to make things work, and I know you've got the ability with your knowledge, experience, working with the consent decree, and I read in the paper that one of your meetings can be with the PPL, which I think is a wonderful move, to blend that in together, to make it work for the people within the department and the people of Los Angeles that keep paying the bills. And congratulations, an excellent selection for this position.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Well, Mr. Holden, then Mr. Weiss.
As President members, let them say all those good things about you today, chief. Tomorrow is a different story. But then you can always say to them, I didn't ask to come here, you sent for me, and I'm going to do my job while I'm here. I want to acknowledge the fact that on the consent decree, you were there, doing all the drafting, making it all happen for the people of the city of Los Angeles. They blame others for having done that, but you're the guy who had the brain and the commitment to make it happen. And of course, the city applauds you for it because we need it now more than ever. Fact of the matter is that you're here to carry on the implementation of that program. But I want to make one other suggestion to you. Don't be prepared to leave in two or three months. There's an election coming up in November, and whoever they might select should know whether or not they're going to be in a big city or a small one. I understand that. That's your opinion, and maybe it'll prevail, but sometime we have to leave something to the voters, and not by chance. And anyway, just hang around for a while.
Thank you, Mr. Holden.
We're going to need you.
Mr. President? I just want to congratulate you, Chief Pomeroy. It's a, it's a real benefit to the city of Los Angeles to have you back, and I have no doubt, even though you and I have never met, knowing what I do about you and having read what I've read about you and spoken to so many people who know you, that you did not come back to Los Angeles from Montana to be a caretaker of this department. You came back from Montana to Los Angeles to move this department forward in areas of reform, community-based policing, and responsiveness to the community. You came back from Montana because you know we have areas of this town which are suffering from rising crime rates, and you're, and you want to leave your mark in whatever period of time it is here on those parts of town and on the city of Los Angeles. And I pledge to work as closely with you as I possibly can and as closely as you want, with as much help and assistance as you want, to ensure that your tenure as chief of police is extraordinarily successful and really productive for this city. Good luck, chief.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, members. Back to the item at hand. Return to the item at hand, Mr. Zine.
I get my time to start over at two minutes and 46 seconds, and we should start out at the top.
You got it, Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. This was handed to me this morning, and now I'm sure some consultants were paid a whole lot of money for this flow of paper, and I don't understand how you expect us to receive this this morning. Now, not at 8 o'clock, 9 o'clock. This presented about 10:15 this morning to me and all the council members, documents which you recited in your opening statement. And what I find amazing is that we're supposed to review this during the process this morning and vote on an issue that's going to cost $400 million to the taxpayers of the city of Los Angeles. There needs to be some time to review. We need to be brought up to speed. I don't dispute that revitalization is important in the city of Los Angeles, and I don't dispute that Jan Perry is doing a tremendous job for the Ninth District that needs to have redevelopment take place. The concern I have, when I read the newspaper articles on this, and you find that the Los Angeles population reads two papers, and one of it says, one of the articles, "Downtown LA Thinks Big: Plan Would Create Thousands of Homes and Possibly Include a New Stadium", which hasn't been addressed, and the other one is, "Downtown Project May Starve the City", and it also talks about a new stadium for a National Football League. And I recognize that the CRA has an interesting past, but then I receive a document from the LA Unified School District supporting this project because they anticipate receiving between $312 million and $445 million over a term, period of time. There's so many unresolved questions on this particular project. When I look at the Holiday Inn in that area, did the CRA involve themselves in the revamping of that hotel? Did the CRA involve itself in the New Palm Restaurant adjacent to Staples, or with those private enterprises, as we see happening with the BID District in downtown Los Angeles, which is the private sector taking care of their own community? I don't understand why you have this rush for judgment, why it hasn't gone to committee. I don't feel comfortable voting for this, and there's a tremendous amount of unresolved issues and questions, and I don't want to take up two hours of this committee meeting. But when we're presented these documents this morning and expected to vote on something to this extent, it is really ridiculous, and it slaps in the face of proper review of a And there's just many, many more questions that I have in addition to my particular area, the West San Fernando Valley. While we received some CRA funding, in the last 10 years, there's been one new opportunity for development. That's the new Walgreens. They just broke ground for that 10 years later in Reseda. So we look at the CRA and we look at the past history and we look at this wonderful project that says, we're going to create jobs and houses and the school district's going to hit a lot of money, but what's it going to cost the people of the valley? What's it going to cost the people of Los Angeles? And how are we supposed to review all these documents in a short period of time and then vote for the sum of $400 and some million dollars? Can you please answer those questions? And I have many, many more questions, but at this particular time, I think it's foolish for us to vote yes on this. This should have gone to some committee. It should have been reviewed at length and we should have had the time and opportunity to review all the documents and get the community input. But the county's talking about a lawsuit. A stadium hasn't been addressed, yes or no? Even both papers in Los Angeles say that's a possibility. And I know that they want to build on the Staples Center while the Convention Center goes broke. We need to come together and find out how we make this work because currently, from what I see, it's not working and it's all disconnected. Jerry, I guess you're the man with the podium microphone and take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
First of all, I want to be... Hello? Hi. Hello, test?
Go ahead.
First of all, I do want to be very respectful of you need to deal with this very significant issue. If I can, I just want to touch very quickly on a couple of points. Number one, I don't know anything about this stadium. The only thing I've heard about is what I've read in the paper. It's certainly not been in our plans. There's no proposal. We don't know anything about it. Most of the materials to analyze this issue and the critical heart of it were delivered some time ago. What we delivered this last week or this last day or so were the responses that we are required to produce as a result of the meeting last week. So we only had a week to deal with it and we gathered that material just as quickly as we could, but they are specifically responding to the particular points that are made by key speakers and the objections and so on, which we try to deal with a little bit orally. Again, others may have a little bit more detail, but my sense of the Holiday Inn and the Palm Restaurant is that none of that would have happened had the CRA not been involved in the earlier stages of dealing with Staples. There's clearly some activity going on. The question is whether or not we're going to try to use an opportunity to make sure that there is development and it's really successful or whether or not we delay it. In the normal course, my instinct is let's slow things down. Let's make sure everybody is satisfied and is comfortable. I do want to tell you, I'm very nervous about delaying this process because if we delay it, we will lose out an entire year. Thank you.
Yes, if I could just add to this, as Mr. Charlin pointed out, in the materials that were originally transmitted as part of the report to council, beginning on page 91, there is a very extensive discussion of why the elimination of blight and the redevelopment of the project area cannot be accomplished by alternatives other than tax increment financing. And in that regard, to point out again that the plan will not cost the city any particular amount because tax increment is only created if the CRA is successful in generating jobs, housing, commercial development and reversing the conditions of blight, which at the moment are resulting in a decline in the property value and therefore a decline actually in the amount of property taxes and other taxes that are being generated in the Central Business District. There was not any direct participation either in the Palm or in the Holiday Inn. There was participation on the part of the city in projects in that area, including the clearance of a substantial amount of blight in the area that surrounded the Convention Center and the Staples Center that allowed the private sector to begin to make investments in that area. The rehabilitation of the Holiday Inn would not have occurred, I strongly believe, without the elimination of the blight that immediately surrounded that area before the decision was made to do the Staples Center. The Palm Restaurant came in because of the pedestrian traffic that was generated by the Staples Center itself and other activities that are taking place in and around the Convention Center area. In other portions of downtown, it's only very recently that people have begun investing in the potential conversion of what still remains to be close to 6 million square feet of vacant space in historic office buildings that are now being looked at for use for housing, which is helping incidentally in dealing with the housing shortage that we have in the City of Los Angeles. Virtually every residential unit that has been built in the downtown area up until very recently would not have happened without direct participation from the redevelopment agency. Virtually every one of them required financial participation for them to happen. They all required some type of assistance or they would not have occurred. They still require some type of assistance or they would not be occurring. For the first several years in the prior redevelopment project area, there was no direct investment in any commercial space. It was about 12 years into the original redevelopment project area before private investment in commercial space began to happen. So there's a long period of time and lead activities before an area begins to turn about.
Mr. Dean.
I just want to comment, Mr. Zine, that the activities at the Holiday Inn and Palm Restaurant and in and around there are a direct result of two CRA actions. One is the development of the Staples Arena and the elimination of the blight that was across the street. We have not finished that because the plan provides for both a hotel and an expansion of the Convention Center. And the second one was in fact the Convention Center. That was a part of the CBD in the initial program. Without those, there would be no need for a Palm Restaurant. There would be no need for an upgrade of the Holiday Inn. It has changed the entire nature of that whole end of downtown. Although we are not completed with what we have to do there and the redevelopment, I think involves both eventually the expansion of the Convention Center and the Convention Center Hotel and some other things, but that is almost a perfect example of what we're trying to do in other parts of downtown. It is the catalyst that we're looking to, to use these funds to in fact encourage private investment in these areas. It's not to underwrite the entire investment, but in fact to act as a catalyst to get these things done from the private sector. And I could not think of a better example of what we want to do than what surrounds the Palm Desert, Palm Desert, the Palm Restaurant and Holiday Inn.
Mr. Burnson.
Yes, let me make a few comments. I'm not going to ask any questions because I've heard from all of you to ad nauseam, to be very honest with you. Not that I disagree. And Doug, I think you probably capitalized this better than anybody and I don't know if anybody around here was listening, but I'm going to try to put it in a language that maybe some of the council members will understand. First of all, I have never been a great fan of CRA as you know. However, I did serve on the Blue Ribbon Committee in 1975 that originally did the CBD plan. The problem with the redevelopment process, it has a very bad reputation because of things that happened in the past before the laws changed that stopped cities like industry from declaring their entire city a redevelopment project in order to capture the increment money so they could use it for themselves instead of distributing it to the other agencies. That's changed. The law's been changed. I had a small part in that with the Montoya bills. But let me just clarify a couple of things, okay? First of all, there will be no loss of any current revenue to any agency as a result of this project. So when supervisors get up and say, this is going to cost the county $400 million, I don't know what he's talking about because the current revenue that the county's getting will always stay the minimum of that. If there's an increase caused by redevelopment in there, they will get automatically 20% as a basis of the new law. After the project is completed and redevelopment goes away, they'll get all the revenue. So there's nothing for them to be, other than the fact that they are anti-CRA or just don't understand the process. One of the big problems that existed in 1975 still exists in the downtown area and that is the lack of a residential community. And one of the things I wish that I had advocated then had come to pass and that was doing the Upper Stories on Broadway and Spring Street as residential use, which we're now looking at finally about 30 years later, okay? But better late than never. That's how the city works. South Park gives us, and by the way, the Skid Row is not going to go away. In answer to your question, Mr. Weiss, redevelopment has taken place, but downtown has moved. It hasn't redeveloped. It's moved. It's moved west. If you go down on Spring Street and Main Street and Broadway, well, Broadway has a little different situation because of the retail there with the Latino element in the city now as strong as it is. But those areas have not changed and they're probably not going to change because you have a human element there that's going to preclude until something happens where we can deal with the homeless people. The property values are going to stay the way they are and you're not going to have redevelopment there. But we do have an opportunity in the South Park area. The Staples Center and things of that nature, the Blue Line Station, which is directly across from there, gives us an opportunity to create the residential community and the mixed-use community that we could have there, which will be positive for the new downtown committee. Notice I said new downtown committee because I'm being very honest with you. The CBD was, in many cases, a failure and I don't want to see that happen here. One of the reasons that redevelopment had a bad reputation was the fact that much of the funds that were used were used for administrative costs, just to have large staffs and to keep them going. Well, the last few redevelopment projects, I have made an amendment which I'm going to make right now, and that was to put a cap on the administrative costs. So I would move that we put a 10% administrative cost on this project and I would hope to get a second on that. Okay, second of all, I want to deal with the possible division of Los Angeles. You notice I didn't say secession. I said division. We don't know if it's going to happen or not happen, but we have to deal with the question because some of the people are going to be asking the question about who's going to be responsible for the debts. The area that is in the redevelopment project is the area that pays for paying off the bonds, not any other area. In fact, other areas may be the beneficiary of housing as a result of increment money. In fact, 20% of all increment money is required by state law to be used for housing. But the valley, if it were to leave, or Hollywood, would not be responsible for any bonds which are sold for this project. In fact, the bonds are not even general obligation bonds. They are revenue bonds that are paid off by the increase in value or the increment money of the project. Basically, I think I've said everything I want to say. I think everybody's had a crack at this thing. I am not a great fan of the old process, but I've seen a change. I've seen Hollywood working because it's being addressed a little different way. There are still some things I'd like to see done. I don't know why we have to have two planning departments, one at the CRA and one in the City of Los Angeles. That could automatically cut off a lot of the costs and that's one of the things I may push, independent of this, by the way. So that we can combine that. Mr. President, you didn't allow other people to have 10, 15 minutes and I'm concluding in a minute, okay? If you don't mind.
Please do.
Okay. Basically, I'm going to support this because I think, wearing my city hat and not trying to inflame anybody in the valley or any other part of the city, I think this will be good for the city. And if the valley and the other areas stay in the city, they will be the beneficiary down the road of the tax increment and economic development that takes place as a result of it. So I would urge an i-vote on it and I would hope the agency will really move forward and do the job.
Thank you, Mr. Burnson. So those are many motions that shall be voted on after the discussion. Ms. Siskowski.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Burnson. I thought your comments, particularly given some of your history and involvement in this are useful. I want to just address a couple of questions that my colleagues raised in the past and the structure we know generally is we refer things to committee. We have not referred CRA project approval to committee because it really does affect each and every one of us. And if we look at the project that was, the CRA project that was created in Canoga Park, if we look at the CRA project that was created in North Hollywood, that didn't come first to committee. It came to the council so that everyone could buy in, look at it, digest it, understand it, ask questions, et cetera. And I also wanted to refer particularly from those who've had concern about the valley, about why this, why now? We didn't stop a Canoga Park CRA project, redevelopment project, or a North Hollywood redevelopment project, or a Pacoima redevelopment project because they were neighborhoods that were in need that the council members of those districts brought forward, worked with the CRA, worked with the planning department and the planning element in CRA to focus on what was needed. Interestingly, we actually even had a redevelopment project in the community of Sherman Oaks in the valley and it was the first thing that the newly-elected, then newly-elected council member of CD5 did. That was Michael Fuer. He came in responding to the community saying, we've reconsidered. We don't want this as a redevelopment project. I'm going to make a motion, ask the council, ask the CRA to dissolve that CRA project. That was done. So CRA has been a tool, is a tool, that has been used in all of our neighborhoods, including many neighborhoods in the valley and many neighborhoods in the valley are now benefiting from those projects. I would also like to say that those, you know, I dare say that when there was an article that might say this is bad, the pictures would be showing glistening downtown business towers. Members of the council, that was the CBD. That was part of the CBD adopted 30, 35 years ago. That is not part of what we're doing today. Those were brought back. Those were successful through CRA projects. Today, they are producing incredible property tax differential from when they were approved and that is now going to all those other agencies. We are beyond the cap on that and that is property tax that everybody in the community, everybody in the city is benefiting from. We need to now, so I appreciate and think that this is well-drawn, well-focused because as Mr. Burnson said, downtown has shifted. The areas where downtown needs help have shifted and so this now redraws it more narrowly, more focused. I did have one question and I think this may need to be something that's done either at a later element in the Oversight Committee and a later report, but I heard Ms. Perry say and I heard the CRA say that an important element in this is creating housing, creating housing for all kinds of people who are going to be needing to live, work and play and recreate downtown. But I think one fair criticism that might be justified of the old CBD, old housing projects, were that a large proportion of the low-income housing that was CBD located under the old project were single-room occupancy units in the hotels that have now become problematic and may have contributed to further blight. I would like to make sure that as we talk of the lofty goal of having housing, having low-income housing, having family housing, that we really produce housing in a village kind of atmosphere, in a community kind of atmosphere that works for everybody and doesn't create a dependence and a predominance of single-room occupancy housing. That isn't something that needs to be addressed specifically today, but clearly as we get the annual reports back and other information, I am going to ask the Chair of the Housing Committee and the Economic Development Committee to really pay close attention to that as we bring back these areas and work with some projects that CRA will be producing in this area, that the housing really stand alone for showing that it is creating an important component core of the redevelopment that will occur in this area and will be viable, sustainable, all-level kind of housing, but that the low-income increment of it is balanced for families and is not balanced in what we know today as single-room occupancy hotels.
Thank you. Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. I greatly enjoyed following Hal Burnson and Sidney Siskowski as we hear a little about the history. And I add a little that in 1958, they started downtown here. Mayor Paulson was the mayor and as John Farrar always told me, that was the toughest job when they tried to assemble the land downtown. And then over the course of time, development took place. But this is what we have to do to move forward and I greatly like what Ed Reyes is doing with his committee and working with us as council members to talk us about that important issue of housing, to where it can go in the city because we're all for housing. Now we have a great opportunity. If you talk to those who know the streets of downtown Los Angeles, there's several buildings that are vacant above the ground floor. This provides an excellent opportunity to build that type of housing that Sidney was just talking about, the combination housing that's necessary to make Los Angeles... issue of housing, to where it can go in the city, because we're all for housing. Now we have a great opportunity. If you talk to those who know the streets of downtown Los Angeles, there's several buildings that are vacant above the ground floor. This provides an excellent opportunity to build that type of housing that Sidney was just talking about, the combination housing that's necessary to make Los Angeles a more livable city. I don't know if Los Angeles will ever be a 24-hour town, the only 24-hour town I know is just past the state line in Nevada. But we need to be, we need to be a city that people live in. And in 1958, it was termed blighted because of all the old houses that were on Bunker Hill, all the challenges, some of the toughest police precincts were on Bunker Hill, some of the toughest footbeats Dennis signed were on Bunker Hill, some of the toughest houses that the police officers had to enforce the laws of the city, and as it's cleaned up. So it's very important that we go through that. Also, the amendments to take care of the service providers who are doing the real work of the City of Los Angeles, doing the work on Skid Row with those who have challenges greater than others, and to make sure that they're taken care of, which is so important. And also the Community Redevelopment Agency and being more modern in their approach, and not being big and bad, but more warm in the sense of dealing with issues of housing and housing relocation, to make sure things are taken care of and people are square at the end of the day. We have to look to the city in the future, this core of Los Angeles and also other parts. I'm proud of the work you're doing out in North Hollywood, we've got to push harder. This council, and I don't like to talk about this council because I know the other council, but all council wants to get things done now. And now is the time to move ahead and to be very open in our process. This time of year is when we'll have that. We'll have another matter come before us soon after it goes through committee on parkland in the Hollywood Hills and in the Santa Monica Mountains, because this is the time that you have to do this, or you have to wait another year. That's where you may think there is a rush. But I just wanted to stand and support this, and also push you in other areas, whether it's Canoga Park or North Hollywood, and serve the people of Los Angeles well with respect in the process as a tool of government, which the Redevelopment Agency is. Thank you all very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti.
(inaudible) won't ask me why you know it's a 24-hour town, we'll save that for another day. It's been a long debate, there's been a lot that's been said already, but I hope that my colleagues and folks that are here will bear with me. Maybe some of the folks that are in the audience came down, talked about neighborhood councils downtown, I know there's some that are going to talk about school bond later. Whatever the reason that you're here or that you might be listening, I think it's incumbent upon us to lay out some basic facts about what redevelopment is, because a lot of people are listening to this and it's so easy to get lost from the beginning. We have a fundamental question before us today, not just about one redevelopment area, but do we believe in redevelopment? And what redevelopment allows us to do is, under state law, we can go into a place, we can decide that it is blighted, we can say that we have tried to develop this, we have tried to bring in private enterprise, and where that has failed, we will bring in a new mechanism that allows a quasi-governmental or a new governmental entity to have money from new taxes that are generated that will pay for new activity in that area. There's a second thing that not a lot of people have talked about today, but it's also that there's a power given to it, and that power is the power to take land, and that is by far the most politically contentious part of redevelopment. And there are things that are done to try to mitigate that. Where somebody's land is taken to do a redevelopment project, they get replacement housing, they're given money so that they still have maybe a better quality of life, and that's why we're talking about that as well today. But when we look at blight in the city, we all have to ask ourselves, not do we need the CRA, but do we believe in redevelopment itself? It's like looking at anti-poverty policies at the federal level, and we had some ultra-conservatives who say, "Look, the welfare state has failed, let's get rid of welfare." Well, I think for most of us, it's not that where the welfare state had failed that we should abolish the idea of trying to lift people up out of poverty, it's that we need to always improve that system. And I, for one, fundamentally believe in redevelopment, but of course, we have to be careful, we have to have a watchful eye, we have to be like hawks, making sure that we do it in the best way, that we improve it as it goes along, and that we make sure that it actually gets down to human redevelopment, those individuals who live, work, and recreate in this city. I agree that the foundation, and I'm going to ask for my time to be extended just to, as the Chair of the Economic Development Committee, to speak for five minutes on this, but the things that were raised by Councilmember Zine, I know they've been addressed, you're right, the CRA is not bringing in the Palms, and the CRA is not improving the Holiday Inn, but they are allowing that to happen because of what happened before. In Hollywood, similarly, in North Hollywood, it allows people who stand at the sidelines because private capital is very cautious, and it won't go there until there is a magnet to draw it there, and that is the ideal with this. As a side note, I don't know much about a football stadium either, and this is not what this is about. Any redevelopment area, any part of the city, may consider having a football stadium, but that is not what this is about for us, the decision-makers today. Fundamentally, it is not, and there is certainly no subsidy for any football team or football stadium or any billionaire involved in this. Next, the citywide impact I want to address. In the Valley, for instance, from Canoga Park to Pacoima, we have redevelopment areas. From Hollywood to San Pedro, where we're starting another redevelopment area that came before us last week, in those areas that are most talking about division, and I like that term, Mr. Burnson, division of our city, we also have redevelopment in those areas. And it's important for us to know that it's not just the downtown interests, it's downtown Canoga Park, it's downtown Pacoima, it's all of those areas. The biggest deal we've done in this past year for redevelopment is in North Hollywood. And it's a model development where we've learned those lessons of the past, where we actually have advocates and folks who are the developers both coming and say, "This is a good thing for both of us." That's rare. And why? Because it's a fundamental moral question. We believe that in the Valley, Valley residents deserve to have childcare and transportation and housing that they can afford and that's located in a good place, and this is the mechanism to do it, because private enterprise is not, and you don't want your tax dollars directly subsidizing it. So this allows us to bring other revenues in. Do we have more work to do? Of course, we have to improve oversight. Do we have more work to do? Of course, we have to make sure that we get closer to those communities. We have to make sure that outreach is done better, and I want us to do better outreach, and that's why it is so important for us to reach out to folks like the Figaro Corridor Coalition, who bring things to our attention that sometimes we forget about, who bring things to our attention, and people who actually live there, bring them to the table, because no matter how good our outreach is, we will always miss important people. And so that's why the amendment has to move forward now, that's why we have to look at that process and make sure that we have relocation and replacement housing that's looked at in a more careful way, and that we have to look at that loophole for SRO housing, because those are living, human beings that do get dislocated. In closing, I want to support this, I want to support, yes, I said in closing, Mr. Ridley Thomas, I want to support Councilmember Perry for her incredible work on this, and I want that to be said. I want Councilmember Pacheco, whose district is also overlapping this, to be supported, because we do, in Los Angeles, fundamentally believe in redevelopment. We do fundamentally believe that we in Los Angeles can create that model, that folks like Leonard Shapiro and others pointed out to us the faults of the past. But we don't get rid of the entire system, we say we can create a better one, and this is a step forward today to doing that. I urge all of your support on this most important matter today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President, colleagues. I know we're all rushing for time, and I can see the desperate look in a lot of faces here, but bottom line is this, when we put together the Staples Center, we developed a partnership with over 200 organizations, and 30 of which were part of the Figaro Corridor. We were able to put together a partnership with the Community Development Department, nonprofits, we allocated jobs, we formed a partnership with the unions, we were able to work with the developers, and it was something that allowed us to move in a record pace to develop facility that is a national landmark. Today, with this effort, and I want to applaud Councilmember Perry for bringing in those amendments or inclusion of those replacement relocation implementation displacement plans, and that we move accordingly, we bring back that momentum that was established back then to this project, because that is the only way we're going to actually effectuate and make a difference to those people that live not only in the downtown area, those downtown residents, who clean the buildings, who serve the food, who prepare all the goods and wares that makes the city function, but also impacts those neighborhoods in South Central, in Pico Union, and the East Side, that make up the magnificent place we call the City of Los Angeles. So again, I'm hoping that the CRA goes ahead and schedules these meetings with the Figaro Corridor Group, lay down these policy issues, and let's look at the language that does not take us away from the base year, it does not violate the plan amendment, but allows the general plan, but allows us to effectuate policy plans that in effect will create the changes that this proposal will do. Just as a side comment, I understand Councilmember Burnson's concern with the cap on administration, but quite frankly, if we don't have the tools, if we don't have the individuals, the talent to move this process, to move the financial performers, to move the analysis, to protect the public dollar, then it's not going to work. So my hesitation there is that, although I understand the need for a cap, let's make certain that we're not chopping off those elements that make it work. Thank you much.
Mr. Holden, followed by Mr. Ridley Thomas and Ms. Galanter.
Mr. President, remember, you can hold my time while Mr. Murray Kane comes to the mic. And I got to ask him a question, Mr. President, and the question is that as we go about re-establishing redevelopment areas, the essential services were, at one time, and they still may very well be, fire, police, et cetera, paid for after the cap is fixed, and therefore, the monies that are required to pay for the essential services come from the other taxpayer, property tax in the district. It's my understanding that Senate Bill 1533, which introduced by myself, Senator Holden at the time, corrected that problem and saved redevelopment, an opportunity to redevelop certain areas. Would you elaborate to make sure that they have a clear understanding of what we're doing here today and the consequences of the action that we might take?
Yes, as Dove LaSalle pointed out before, today there is a mandatory sharing of a tax increment with all of the taxing entities. That was, as Dove had mentioned, AB 1290 in 1994. Years before that, when Councilman Holden was a state senator, he had introduced a precursor statute which served as a model for this tax sharing, which allowed every taxing entity affected by redevelopment to capture a share of the inflationary increase allowed by Prop 13 of 2% a year of assessed value. And that bill that was mentioned by Councilman Holden served as a model for future sharing of tax increment so that we can assure that tax increment does not adversely affect other taxing entities.
Mr. President, members, it provided Los Angeles an opportunity to continue to declare areas blighted and to improve the area where it was like a zero base in terms of taxes, it wasn't producing anything. They froze the tax base, use of revenue to encourage businesses to come in and to improve where they were not otherwise doing that. I might add, it became necessary because we had a colleague named Senator Robbins, who rightfully so, said the Valley was being denied its opportunity and fair share in asmuch as the property taxpayers were paying for the essential services from their tax base, which had to be increased in order to provide for those services. And so by having the redevelopment area itself provide for those services, using a growth in the tax increment, it became an opportunity for us to continue along with this program, and having done so, now each council district, if they choose to do so, do in fact have a redevelopment area. In my district, for an example, we have two or three areas that have been established, and it is absolutely necessary to see improvement in the area. Might I say, however, that for years prior there, too, it was a dead issue. You can look from City Hall down Central Avenue and see nothing happening, but when the redevelopment areas were established in those specific areas, then growth began, there were business opportunities provided for developers to come in, to make life better and rid itself of the blight in those cities. For anyone at this point in time to say it is not a benefit to the people, it doesn't improve the quality of life, which in fact it does, is not like, got their eyes closed, minds closed, and rather idiotic statement for anyone to make a statement like that. For those areas, for an example, in their own respective district, they do have such a program, they do have redevelopment areas, and it is improved. I dare say to you that downtown wouldn't be what it is, South Bay, South Park wouldn't be what it is, in my district, even today, Mid-City wouldn't be what it is, if it were not for the fact that we have an opportunity to have a redevelopment area there and encouraging businesses to come in, and working on a plan between, a partnership between the businesses and government to make it happen. I know that those guys in Redevelopment Agency have been somewhat power-drunk and abused the power, but that's our position, now to hold the feet to the fire, to make sure that they don't have those kind of problems. So, Mr. President, members, I'm going to respectfully vote to support this proposal before us, without it, things will stand still. If we didn't have any growth, we would be back in the horse and buggy days, we would have, people would be afraid to fly because you didn't have the Wright Brothers and things go on. You've got to have a boost, you've got to have the support, and if you don't have that, nothing will happen, but thank God that eight votes here will make it happen.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. The Chair now recognizes Councilmember Mark Ridley-Thomas.
Thank you, Madam President. I move the previous question on the entire matter. In other words, the whole nine.
All right. Is there anyone who objects to the previous question being called?
No.
Seeing no objection, we will have the matter now before us. I don't think we need to vote on that since there is no objection. The Agency and the City Council will now proceed to consider actions to approve and adopt the proposed redevelopment plan. Mr. Chair?
My motion on the administrative costs will go to committee to be determined and brought back, okay?
Okay. Mr. Burnson has asked that his motion go to committee, and that will be the order. Mr. Chair? Mr. Farrar?
We have before the Agency a resolution of the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Los Angeles, California, certifying that the Agency has reviewed and considered the information contained in the final environmental impact report for the redevelopment plan for the City Center redevelopment project, making certain findings regarding the environmental impacts of the proposed redevelopment plan, and adopting a mitigation monitoring program and statement of overriding considerations. May I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. We have before the Agency a resolution of the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Los Angeles, California, approving the redevelopment plan for the City Center redevelopment project area, and the report to council thereon, and authorizing the submission of the proposed redevelopment plan and the report to council, to the City Council of the City of Los Angeles. May I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hayes, there was a public hearing last week, an extensive public hearing.
Joint hearing with two agencies.
There was a joint hearing last week.
With a secret card. I asked him to tell me how it's going to resolve, he never did it. He has my cards in his possession.
There was a public hearing at which you spoke last night of the joint agency.
This is a CRA joint meeting, it's two agencies. He has to handle his business, and you handle yours.
We held a joint agency meeting last week as well, as a public hearing for both.
This is a CRA meeting, Madam Chair.
The CRA has the problem, rather than you do.
Again, I think we've added, asked that, there is not a public hearing at this time, I would appreciate the mic being turned off.
May I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The resolution passes. Mr. President and members of the City Council, the Agency now submits to you the actions of the Agency for your consideration in your actions to adopt a proposed City Center redevelopment
Councilmembers Perry and Pacheco, do you want to present the resolutions and ordnance?
I'm sorry, Madam President, I'm not sure what the procedure is.
You want to present, to have the council act on the resolutions and the ordinance?
Okay, I would like to request that my colleagues take this resolution, just voted on by the Redevelopment Agency and adopt it as indicated by the board.
Members, that those resolutions and ordinance are now before us. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes, three noes.
That matter is approved. Is there a request to send this forthwith to the mayor?
As much as there are the ordinance, the ordinance will be held for one week.
Madam Chair?
I'm sorry.
Can we have that go forthwith, please?
Excuse me, since it was not unanimous on the ordinance, it needs to be held over one week, since it was not unanimous, so that will await and be scheduled on the next week's agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you all. Mr. Clerk, next item?
Item number 10, called Special by Councilmember Labonte.
Do you mind if we adjourn?
I'm sorry, we'll take a moment to let the CRA adjourn.
We're adjourned.
We're adjourned.
Wendy, Zion, and I, uh, White.
Good job, Joe Klein. This is our motion.
You know, I'm a...
They turn it off.
That's why I'm really talking to them again.
I know.
Madam President?
Yes, the chair recognizes Mr. Garcetti.
Can we reconsider item eight, please? I know there were two cards that were submitted. I know we don't have to hold testimony, but I think there's some useful, very short, maybe one card even that's there.
Is there any objection to a motion to reconsider item number eight? If not, that matter is before us.
And I would make a motion then to have a public hearing of three minutes, if any cards that exist.
All right.
We have a second reading. We have one more reading.
Item eight is now before us for the purpose of holding a public hearing. I have two cards here. First, Mr. Gene Krishner, or Krisher. Is Mr. Gene Krisher here?
I gotta make sure that...
All right, the other person who submitted a card. That was the only card we had submitted, Mr. ...
Oh, you have George Bezetti there, too.
Don't have it. Well, don't you go ahead and speak.
Thank you very much. And I'd really like to personally thank you, Mr. Garcetti, on this very important subject, and Mr. Padilla also for allowing us to come back on this... Oh, sorry. Always flips up. Thank you. On this very important issue on the school district, I heard a discussion here about amendments for limiting oversight costs. And Proposition BB, the $2.4 billion bond, the district gave away to people for no consideration to the students between $600 million and $1 billion. We're here to ask the city council today to add on to your resolution for the school bond, that there be an accountability provision put in to watch the money as it's being spent, not after it disappears. This is extremely important. If the city council is going to be involved in the school district, the mayor was just meeting, while you're meeting here, with students from high schools around this city. The students from Crenshaw, most aggrieved, had a list of six non-gang students who've been assassinated, literally, in the last year from their school. They mentioned corruption, and it is massive in this school district. We should not allow wealthy businessmen, and I have no complaints, I'm a businessman, for making a reasonable profit. However, that's all they're entitled to. There is a joint audit committee study that shows average school construction averages 182% of bid. If we do this, as right now Facilities is worried, they're going to have property and no buildings because they've lost $1 billion. These kids do not deserve this. The city doesn't deserve it. If you're going to have oversight on CRA, let's have some oversight for the children, our future. This is the latest deviation week. There was a study done because of result of the lack of competent kids coming into the aerospace industry by Booz Allen, by a retired Air Force general. If you'd like, I will get a copy to Mr. Padilla's office for all of you. It is one of the best studies on what's happened in education that I've ever seen. No educrats would ever write something like this. This is very good. So I'm asking you, please, to consider adding on to your resolution an accountability factor, whether it's Mr. Richmond's AB 2425, which is up there being discussed right now, which Mr. Romer went up without approval of the board to argue against any accountability on the bond. Now I'll say to you, in your business or in public office, why would you be worried about having anybody oversight your business with a public entity with public dollars if you're clean? And with that, I will let Mr. Krisher speak, and I will thank you very much for listening to this. It is extremely important. We're talking about, just in this city, a potential $2 billion going for nothing. And our kids deserve better than this, and the city council ought to send a message that stealing from kids is an unallowable offense. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The chair now recognizes Mr. Krisher.
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, committee members, Gene Krisher, friends of the children. I'm also here to urge you to enunciate a need for proper oversight and proper accountability with regard to the vast sums of money that are coming both through the state bond for facilities for public education and through the local bond that will be no doubt floated by the Board of Education in August for consideration by the voters in November. That's another $5 billion. It dwarfs Proposition BB. And everyone knows what happened to Proposition BB, and I don't think that any of us want to see that occur again. Simultaneously with this meeting, on the 26th floor, the mayor heard from very bright children from different high schools, they enunciated they knew inherently that the money was not reaching their needs in the classroom, and they enunciated corruption. That corruption has to be stamped out with extreme prejudice. So, as my colleague, Mr. Bezetti, had urged you to do, I urge you to reconsider this resolution to include wording enunciating the need for proper oversight and accountability. He also mentioned to you that our inspector general is fighting for authority to oversee this bond money on the front end, right now in Sacramento, and some of our colleagues are there arguing for that now. It's inexcusable that these vast sums designated for the classroom should be diverted by whatever means. And we call on you as conscientious citizens and as our representatives, even though you don't have direct authority over the school district, if you're going to advocate for the passage of this bond, I believe that it's legitimate to ask you to add language that is specifically with regard to oversight and accountability. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Mr. Garcetti.
Chair, thank you, Madam Chair. I was going to recommend that we move forward and send to committee a piece of looking at whether or not we should have that accountability, but I believe I'll just yield to the chair of the Education Neighborhoods Committee who has an even better idea. So, go ahead.
Thank you, and I appreciate you coming before us, and I'm glad, Mr. Garcetti, you recognized it, that we needed to reconsider this. It went through very quickly and on consent. I believe you're absolutely right. And what we're asking voters to do is approve the largest school construction bond measure in our history, and you're absolutely right. And what I would like to do is not move it forward with our recommendation, and I don't think we as a body, as the City Council of Los Angeles, should sign on our support of this bond measure until we have some accountability language written in it. I, while we have no direct authority over the schools that will be built in our city, the children of this school district are as much our constituents as their parents are, and we have a huge responsibility to make sure that what we're voting for, the dollars that will be designated to build schools, are done efficiently. There's accountability there, and I really am a big believer in joint use agreements, and these are the kind of things we've been striving to have happen in the City of Los Angeles. These schools should be built with joint use agreements with the City of Los Angeles, whether it be with our libraries, whether it be with our parks. There's not enough land anymore to build the kind of schools we were all used to. So there needs to be some real commitments and accountability built into our support of this resolution. I think ultimately, we want to sign on as an endorser of this, but I think you're right. I'm not willing to send this forward with my support until we bring it back to committee and work on some accountability language. So I hope you will all agree with me on that.
Thank you, Ms. Han. The chair recognizes Ms. Perry. Is Ms. Perry here? Let me move on, then. Chair recognizes Mr. Lavand.
Thank you, Madam President, members of council. I rise to support the chair. Education is real important. It's so key that we do, each day we do better. Each day we do much better. Each month, each year, we do much better in doing this here. My biggest disappointment is they're building a golf driving range at City College on Vermont Melrose, which should be a school. My biggest disappointment is we're not taking advantage of public lands, whatever the deal is. This is a crisis, and we all, agencies, have to step back and say, what is best for the children of this city, and not build things that are unnecessary. So I do, I am disappointed with the college district and their ability to do that. So this will give us a better opportunity to find ways, because every one of our community colleges should have an ability to find some type of school on there. Every one of the public facilities, we should partnership and do these important things. So I just want to support it, because I don't want to support a bond that doesn't have this element in there. And I do remember that when, 1970, when they condemned the property across the street from the football field at Marshall High, it was to fix the track at Marshall High and the football field. That track still remains, along with Lincoln High School's track, are the only two tracks in the city that are not standard. So these things have to be done, and this discussion will help further that so we do it right every time for the future, for the future schools, and improve the linkage that is important between parks, libraries, neighborhoods, and schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lavand. Chair recognizes Ms. Han.
Thank you. I just want to clarify that what I did was actually, what I meant to do was move that we send this back to the committee one second, and then come up with this language.
All right, there are no other speakers. We have a motion by Ms. Han to send the matter back to committee. Is there any objection? All right, then that will be the order. Item eight will be sent back to committee. Mr. Clerk?
Item number 10, called special by Councilmember Lavand.
Chair recognizes Mr. Lavand.
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to encourage everyone to follow the president's call of volunteerism. This is a report, this will step us up in the area, because we just had so many opportunities to incorporate people in to our process of serving others, and just wanted to encourage all of us to take advantage of the volunteer program that the mayor's office runs and others, to encourage residents of this city to get involved and make a difference for others. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lavand. The chair recognizes Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. Just a point of clarification. Madam Chair, item 11 had been called special, and it seems to have disappeared from the calendar.
It was not called special. It was considered in a different grouping inasmuch as there was not a hearing at the committee level.
Okay, I thought it was still special. Can we reconsider that then?
Let us finish with item number 10 that is before us, and I'll...
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, item 10 is now before us. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That matter's approved. All right, we have now had a request to reconsider item number 11. Is there any objection to the reconsideration?
Holden.
And that motion is before us, and item 11 is present. Mr. Holden, did you have?
It was important to have the staff explain to you what this is all about, since of the time constraint, if they're not here, then we move to adopt a resolution which really gives what we want, that's a voice at the hearings coming up by the state to protect the city's interests.
So you're recommending that we adopt a resolution?
Yes.
Is the resolution, does the clerk have the resolution?
It's...
Okay.
It's already been passed out, but I can read it if you like. Go ahead, you want to talk? No, I defer to you because you... Where, I picked the wrong one?
The bureau's here, though.
Oh, she's here? All right, bring her up here.
Could the staff please come forward?
Right up front.
Could you please give us a brief presentation?
Thank you, Councilmen. Jorge Antistevan with the Bureau of Sanitation, Michelle McManus, Bureau of Sanitation, and Dan Myers, Bureau of Sanitation. This resolution is in response to a proposed regulation by the California Integrated Waste Management Board in which comments are due on May 13. The proposed regulations will adversely and seriously impact our jar trimmings collection program by potentially shutting down the facilities that we currently have to process the jar trimmings. This could potentially cost this city $2.5 million if this regulation is approved. The regulation, the resolution that is before you is to allow the Bureau of Sanitation to respond to this proposed regulation before May 13, to present oral testimony at the California Integrated Waste Management Board meeting, and to respond back, return to the Environmental Quality and Waste Management Committee within 60 days on the results of our opposition to this proposed regulation.
Thank you. Mr. Holden, did you want to add anything?
Right, Mr. President, it just has an adverse effect on our curbside program and the green grass that we collect, and how long we can keep it in place, five days or 48 hours, and now we try to do it within five days anyway, removing, transferring. And it's just a technicality that they're trying to impose on local government, which is going to cost us about $2.5 million a year. You've got to remember, just yesterday, you voted for something that's going to give you like $180 million for the next 15 years, and you just keep going in that direction. Everybody's going to own the city but the people. So I would say that just give the BOS Department an opportunity to go up there and make their statement in behalf of the city, to make sure we can maintain some kind of control over this composting, and to make sure that the city will have the revenue in order to do the job that we pledged and planned to do for years before. And that was many years ago, we had the curbside separation.
Absolutely.
I, Madam President, I vote on the resolution.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Mr. Burnson.
Is this the only regulation change they're making that you're going to talk about?
Yes.
Nothing that would close Sunshine Canyon, huh?
No.
That's too bad.
Okay, well, if this is just dealing with the green waste, then there shouldn't be a problem with it. But while you're up there, you might want to put in a word about closing Sunshine and Bradley and about conversion to energy, okay?
Okay.
Chair recognizes Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for staying here, coming back for this item. The reason I called this special, colleagues, is I'm supportive of the action, I want to let you know that, because I think it really, these regulations do endanger our mulching programs, and it's, the curbside diversion that we're doing, I think, is great for the city. And I want to just bring up a couple of points. One, as I understand it, as I've read about it, I'm sure you all know, the contaminant that's causing a lot of this is, and this is a tough one to pronounce, cloperolid? I think they probably, is that...
Cloperolid.
Okay, they're...
Very good.
Got it, got it. By Dow, and I'm sure they name it that so we can't pronounce it, which thankfully has been banned for residential use now, but is still being used, as I understand, for commercial use. And one of the things that I'd like to ask you is, what are we doing to reduce the contaminant? I know there's a Keely bill that is looking at that in assembly with an effective date 2004 that's going to do the scientifically responsible thing, but are we doing more locally to reduce its use, which I understand is a lot of the contamination?
Reduce the use of cloperolid?
Uh huh.
Or let me have Mr. Myers answer that question, because he's our cloperolid expert.
Great. Congratulations on that.
Oh, boy, thank you. As far as banning cloperolid, there's been a committee set up. I was just at the Integrated Waste Management Board last Friday, along with Department of Pesticide Regulations. A committee has been formed to actually identify what uses of cloperolid do impact the composting and mulching industry, and there's going to be monthly meetings to identify the sources and then report back to Department of Pesticide Regulations, and they will reconsider actual full ban of the material or tighten the regulations as far as where it can and should be used.
And part of the reason why this is important for us to communicate to folks who watch this on television as well is it's important to get that message out there as well as their own use. This is the right way to go, but it's the wrong way to do it. So I know that today is just a stopgap measure, but we need to get those contaminants out of our mulching. And so if I would just add an action to our motion today, which would be to have the Bureau of Sanitation communicate with, or report back, rather, to Environmental Quality and Waste Management Committee on a communication plan with green bin users and gardeners about what's going into our mulch products right now, so we can make sure, you know, I don't know if it's the Top Grow or some of the other things that are in it right now, whether that's causing some of the problem, we can help you get that out and make sure that we can reduce those contaminants while at the same time keeping the mulching facilities open. Okay? Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. This matter is now before us as recommended with the resolution. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That matter is approved. Next item?
Item number 13 called special inasmuch as a member of the public wishes to be heard.
On item 13, there are some cards submitted. We will now open the public hearing. Mr. Leonard Shapiro, followed by Mr. George Bizet.
Members of the council, this is Leonard Shapiro. I'm a reporter and columnist for the L.A. Watts Times and the Tolucon Times. You have had a very interesting meeting today. On this item number 13, you have a communication from the CRA stating that they want to hire this Lee Andrews Group for $250,000. When I saw this, I asked the people in the, in the clerk's office if they had any backup material on this, and I was told, no, they have no backup material. So you are passing this particular motion with the same information that I got, which is actually nothing because they don't say what they want here, they just say they want $250,000, and they'll submit a report to you every six months and tell you what they're going to do. Now, this is an outfit that's been hired to do publicity and PR work for the Community Redevelopment Agency, which everybody knows has a history. Most of the council members here do not know the history of the CRA. They're not familiar at all with any of the backup material. And if anybody likes to get some material about what they have done in the past 54 years, since 1948 when they were first established, I'll be glad to furnish all that material. They have a record that is documented, and one of the big points on the documented information is the fact that the CDD, Community Development Department, built 30,000 homes, low-cost homes, in 10 years, and the CRA built only a net 8,000 homes in 20 years. Now, that's the kind of outfit that you're giving another $2 billion to. And you say, as Mr. Burnson said, this $2 billion does not come out of current revenue. No, it doesn't come out of current revenue, it comes out of future revenue. And when they say it only comes out of tax increments, they're not telling you the truth. And that's why they need this type of an organization to explain untruth and make it sound like it is the truth. Because for all the years that they've been operating in Los Angeles, they're not used to the truth, and they're not used to people looking at documents, and they're not used to giving the people too much information, which is why they refuse to furnish any backup on item 13. So I would know what actually is going to be done with this $250,000 that you hired. I'm going to talk again to you about the Community Redevelopment Agency at public comment, and I hope that most people stay here to listen to it because you've got a lot to learn. This CRA is not the only alternative. They just built the Alameda Corridor for $2.4 billion without a CRA. The, the city can learn there. It's more than one way to milk a cow. You can do a lot of things if you just put your heart and desire in there. CRA is not the only way, despite what their public comment people will tell you.
Thank you, Mr. Shapiro. The chair recognizes George Bizet, or Bizetti, I'm sorry. It's Mr. Bizetti. That was on the other matter, all right. Thank you. The chair now recognizes Councilmember Garcetti.
Just briefly, this has come to us, I think, three different times. We had it sent back because the controller wanted to look at this. We now feel very, the eyes have looked at this about four or five different times. And one of the things that we pushed on to directly address what Mr. Shapiro was talking about, though some advised me never to do that, but I know he's talking right now. But we have also pushed the CRA to make sure this is not going for PR but for communications so that communities can actually know what the CRA is doing in community and make that link even stronger than it's been. So I think the important word there is communications in this because I had the same concerns that you did, so I don't want it so much going for PR work as much as for communications directly, and we're going to be watching that closely. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilmember Burnson.
I just have one question. Is this from CRA funds or is this coming from the city's general fund? Can somebody answer that? It is CRA funds? Just give me a yes, CRA funds? Okay. And the purpose that was expressed is the purpose it's going to be used for, not for publicity but for communications? Thank you.
There is no other request to, for a member to speak, so item 13 is now before us. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That matter is approved. There's also been a request to send item 11 forthwith, so that will be the order. Next item?
Madam President.
Just got that.
Item number 17, there isn't a many motion that has been circulated, and Ms. Han is the mover of the motion.
The amending motion, 17A, is on the desk. There is no one who wishes to speak, so let us put that matter before us and open the roll on the motion as amended. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That matter is approved.
Item number 19 called special by Councilmember Perry.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I would like to receive and file that item.
I think even to take any action, this is a matter that was not on the agenda, so it is, there are public speaking cards. Let me explain to those members of the public that Ms. Perry is asking the matter be received and filed, meaning that the action of the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment Commissioners, the board, will remain in place. So having said that, I don't know if there's anyone else from the public who would like to speak at this time, but I would ask you to come forward, knowing that the action, the recommendation is to receive and file, and that is just to, to not act on it, to leave things as they are. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak? Okay, well, let me call the cards then. You can come forward. Let me call the cards. Leonard Shapiro? Mr. Shapiro, did you want to speak?
I'd just like to make a few comments on this thing, which the backup material on 19 is self-evident. Something happened here that isn't right, and I see Jan Perry and Mark Whitley-Thomas thought that it wasn't right because the commission, they approved a cannibalized version of the district that was set up, and then the, the people gave them a timely notice that said they do not approve this cannibalized version. Please reject the entire thing. And evidently, they didn't reject the entire thing, they just took it partially and they let it go. Maybe there's some backroom deal being worked out here because I see Ms. Perry is, is sort of amicable to receiving and filing it, so I don't really know. But on the face of it, my God, if people send in a version of a neighborhood district that they want to set up and they want to use it, they have the right to have it, they want to pull it back, they have right to pull it back and put in a new one later. I mean, what kind of operation is being run here?
Mr. Tutte Hayes? Mr. Tutte returned, I don't believe he's in custody. Okay. Satoro Ueda? You need to, would you like to speak?
Next will be Atsuko Baba. Hi, my name is Satueta. My family has had a business in Little Tokyo for over 50 years, and we also are property owners in Little Tokyo as well as in the Arch District. I'm here today to address the, the vote that was made on April 26 by the Dunn Board. My family and is 100% beside, are behind the vote that was taken. I was at that meeting, and at that meeting, there, there was a good cross-section of people from Little Tokyo, their residents represented, businesses represented, nonprofits One pastor from one of the churches spoke on behalf of, also spoke on behalf of having Little Tokyo part of the HCNC. Now, the council commissioners, they did, to my understanding, studied the problem of having Little Tokyo go with downtown, which was not acceptable in their view in that it would have isolated Little Tokyo from, from the rest of the other neighborhood councils. Now, I sent a letter to your respective offices stating why we believe, or I believe, that Little Tokyo should be with HCNC, and it has to do with the public safety issue where the Little Tokyo Public Safety Association has worked with the Arch District and the Chinatown Public Safety Association to form volunteer patrols to combat crime in their area. We also have had the nonprofits working together with, over the years, the Little Tokyo Service Center, which provides counseling to the underprivileged and also to small business and to low-income housing. They're, they are now working together with the Chinatown Service Center to provide housing and small business information and, and aid to small businesses. So those are just a few of the things, or reasons why I think Little Tokyo should, or the vote by the Council Bonk is supported by this board.
Thank you again. The motion that is made on the desk would allow that to remain. Next speaker, Atsuko Baba, followed by George Yu.
My name is Atsuko Baba. I am a member of Little Tokyo Residents Association. I lived seven years in Little Tokyo, Japanese town. I will now, now speak in Japanese.
My name is Takao Suzuki, and on behalf of Mrs. Baba, I'll be providing the translation. On behalf of Little Tokyo residents, I would like to express our support for the April 27 decision and express our desire to remain with the Historic Cultural Neighborhood Council. The main reason for this is because similar places like Chinatown and Alvera Street, Little Tokyo is a historic town, and we would like to combine the strengths of all these communities to work together toward a common goal. While working toward historic and cultural preservation, building on the commonalities we have with places like Chinatown and Alvera Street is our mission as Little Tokyo residents. So the goal of Little Tokyo residents can be achieved, please allow Little Tokyo to remain in the Historic Cultural Neighborhood Council as already decided. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes George Yu. Next speaker is George Yu, after that Lisa Segino.
Councilmembers, thank you for this opportunity to speak. On behalf of, my, my name is George Yu. I'm the Executive Director of the Chinatown Business Improvement District. I have been working on the Historic Cultural Neighborhood Council since our first meetings back in early 2001, I believe. My only statement to the council is that if there is a reconsideration process, the request should be coming from the neighborhoods in question and the communities in question. Part of the founding principle of the HCNC is that each community will take control of its own destiny, create their own boundaries, and decide which neighborhood council to join. At this point, within the HCNC, we do not hear this request coming from either of the contested areas, being the Artist District and Little Tokyo, and we would request that the city council let Bonk's decision stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Segino, followed by Joel Bloom.
I think Lisa's gone.
Okay, Lisa's left, Joel Bloom.
Uh, thank you.
Followed by Jim McQuiston.
My name is Joel Bloom, and I'm the past president of the Los Angeles River Artists and Business Association. I respectfully must disagree with item number 19 and request this esteemed city council to uphold the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners' April 27 action certifying three neighborhood councils, specifically the Historic Cultural Neighborhood Council, which includes Little Tokyo and the Arch District. Two proposed neighborhood councils included Little Tokyo and the Arch District in their boundaries, and Bonk wisely, rightly, and justly placed our communities in the HCNC. May I point out that the request for Bonk to reconsider came from Carol Schatz of the Central City Association and not, and not Tim Keating, President of the Los Angeles River Artists and Business Association. This is because there is no Arch District mandate for either council. Bonk's decision was based on the fact that the Arch District shares the Central City North Community Plan with our other HCNC neighbors. We have shared... Oh, fine. There we go. We, we have shared this plan, uh, the central, we've, pardon me, we have shared the same plan since Lieutenant Ord's Original City Plan Number One of 1849. Greg Nelson, General Manager of Dunn, has stated that most neighborhood council decisions will pertain to land use and planning, thus the importance of the Central City North Community Plan. Downtown has a full plate. The Arch District doesn't want to become a side dish. The Arch District, Chinatown, and Little Tokyo have been entwined since the days of Alzbar, Madame Wong's, and the Atomic Cafe. The Gethin Temporary Contemporary Union Center for the Arts and Chungking Road Galleries tie our communities together still. Bonk and their wisdom saw this, and I know you will too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Jim McQuiston, followed by Brian Kido.
Good afternoon, Jim McQuiston, East Hollywood Community Association. As most of you know, I've been to practically every meeting of everybody that's had anything to do with neighborhood councils, including the downtown formation of the councils. I see no error whatsoever in the board's decision, and I've gone over it very carefully, and I don't see any reason why the council, city council, should get into this, especially at this time. I think the board considered all the relevant facts, including the city ordinance requirement prohibiting overlaps, and that was one of the major problems with the competing councils that they did overlap. And they came to a very solomonic decision on that. I think the redistricting committee actually could use their help in redistricting. And I think everyone can live with what happened, but I do want to mention that when you look at the number of people, and I include both the residents and the owners and the workers in the Central District, we get over one-quarter million people. That is 10 times as large as any other neighborhood council. And there is a movement afoot, and I certainly endorse it, that these councils are way, way too big. We're supposed to talk, according to the charter, with every stakeholder before there is a decision made. How could you possibly, with 25 people, talk to over a quarter million people in 72 hours? We do have to do something about that if we want these to be representative.
Thank you. Next is Brian Kido, followed by Dominic Erler.
I'm Dominic Erler with the Forgotten Edge Neighborhood Watch... I'm Dominic Erler with the Forgotten Edge Neighborhood Watch Improvement Group up near Dodger Stadium. After a long, drawn-out process, we became the historic cultural, part of the historic cultural group. It was very involved. We were reviewed by, on April 27th, and got our certification. And I just want to point, mention one thing. By having the city councils start to review their work is really politicizing the whole process. And I don't think this is really necessary at this time. There are other means. And, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Howard Nishimura, followed by Cecilia Yabara.
I'm the president of the Little Tokyo Community Council, which initially worked on the HCNC decision. And that we decided that we would like to join the Historic Cultural Neighborhood Council. Personally, I feel that the city councils should not review the Bonk decision to, that ratified all the three neighborhood councils. I think they did a lot of homework, and I think they know a lot about what all the communities need and want. And I think that that's the way the decision should stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Cecilia Yabara. Angela Ovale.
Hi, thank you. I'm from the Lincoln Heights Neighborhood Council, and I've worked on getting the council certified. And I just wanted to come and express support for your decision not to review the decision of the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners and not to modify their decision also. Basically, for three reasons. First being that both the Lincoln Heights and Historical Cultural Neighborhood councils are in full agreement with the decision. Don't feel that it cannibalizes an area. Instead, it empowers an area and recognizes certain stakeholders who wouldn't have been recognized before. Second reason is that for your council to step in and to make these decisions would undermine the authority of the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners. When they're at a point where more councils need to be certified than have already been certified, they have an authority that should be respected and understood. And thirdly, the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment done made recommendations that were modified by the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners, but that's perfectly understood and within their right. And there's a difference between recommendations and between decisions made by a board that's been empowered to make those decisions. So, very much support your decision not to review Bonk's decision on April 27th. Thank you.
Next speaker is Angela Ovay, and then Mark Masoaka.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Angela Ovay. I am a member of the Lincoln Heights Neighborhood Council. And I'm here to state that the city council should uphold the commission's decision to certify the neighborhood councils as they did on April 27th. The commission's decision, while unsupported by downtown, is supported by the Lincoln Heights Neighborhood Council. We feel the decision was made based on substantive issues and addressing the needs of the communities involved, including the Historical Cultural Neighborhood Council. And we would ask the city council not to undermine the commission's decision and also not set the bad precedent and also send a very discouraging message to the neighborhood councils that are still in the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Masoaka.
Hello. My name is Mark Masoaka. I'm with the NIKA for Civil Rights and Redress. We're one of the organizations of the Little Tokyo Community Council. I would just like to add my voice to the many others before me expressing support for the decision of the Board of Neighborhood Councils to place Little Tokyo in the Historic Cultural Neighborhood Council and to set the boundaries of Little Tokyo at Forest Street. These were, I think, decisions that were, represent many hours of discussion and compromise, and we think that that should be respected. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes all the cards that we have received. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Tut Hayes has come back. Let me call Tut again.
I would really recommend that you consider what's happening with the downtown neighborhood council for several reasons. First of all, as you no doubt know, they're required to do outreach. And of course, outreach means that eventually they should go to Skid Row. Well, they made an attempt to do that, and it was fashion. What they did is they had a meeting in a church. I attended. Several members of downtown area attended also. It was a two-part agenda, because it was going to take an entire day to peruse these matters. The first part, they simply laid out what it is the neighborhood council's all about, how it's formulated, and what's responsible. The second part of the agenda was dedicated to indicating whether or not the members of Skid Row, people in Skid Row, like myself, would like to have their own neighborhood council, be jointly aligned with downtown, or some other process. Well, we broke for lunch, and downtown neighborhood council never came back. The vote was never rendered. The decision was never made. That's a dirty trick. I can tell you now, they've never made an attempt to outreach to Skid Row. So, I made that complaint to Dunn. I went to one of the neighborhood council meetings, the Department of Water and Power, and I made that complaint to them. They never confirmed with me. They never spoke to me. They made no attempt whatsoever to reconcile the fact they'd not done an outreach in Skid Row. So I think that the city council should at least investigate that aspect of it, because the outreach, which is required for diversity's sake, has never been conducted. So if you go on and allow these things to fester and swirl, it's going to endanger a lot of opportunities taking place downtown. Now, I suggest that the only remedy for poor black people, and that's the population of homeless people downtown, is the federal courts. You always love to run your government by decree. So, we can perhaps get a judge to make a decree indicating that the underclass, the poor people in Skid Row, be involved in neighborhood council system. Thank you.
Thank you. That, I thought the card was on item one. Why don't you come forward, and you'll be the final speaker.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Sylvia Ann Lenny Hawkins, and I want to speak on behalf of the redevelopment. I heard Mr. Garcia mentioning things about the understanding of redevelopment. I am with brand-new buildings because of what could happen when you hold up a building for over 40 years. Now it's going into 80 years, and the danger of, we don't know what's going inside of a building. An example is on Wilshire, right by my Alder Park. In that area, there's being a redevelopment in the area of the building. Now, we do not know what's going on in the inside.
Ms. Hawkins, if I can ask you to hold your comments to a public comment. We are now dealing with neighborhood councils, not redevelopment. But if you want to talk in general, we'll have the public comment hearing right after we act on this matter.
Okay, thank you very much, President.
Members of the council, that concludes the comment cards. We have a motion on the desk, and the, Mr. Zine has asked to speak. So the chair recognizes Councilmember Zine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is there a representative here from Dunn?
Yes, he's coming forward.
The Department of Neighborhood Empowerment representative, Mr. Greg Nelson. Just briefly, I know that we have some border disputes, and I understand that's occurring in other areas. And I support your department, Department of Neighborhood Empowerment, and the commission resolving those issues and not bringing those to the city council. And can you just give briefly an update on what your department is doing, what the commission's doing, to help resolve the disputes that are occurring so it doesn't have to come to this body?
Greg Nelson, General Manager, Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. It seems like most of what we do is involved in resolving disputes. Most of those disputes are over borders. We use a very active process where we will facilitate discussions among the groups. We will use mediators from the Human Relations Commission. We will use mediators in some of the tough cases from the city attorney's office. We've been extremely successful in doing that. Some of it is very time-consuming, and it's very frustrating, but it is a process that has been producing some amazing results. Our goal, of course, is to get the groups to come together, to agree upon what they want, and to not to have us or any other group impose upon them what their boundaries should be. It is, as the old saying goes, one of those processes like making a hot dog. You really don't want to see how this hot dog is being made. Our goal is to produce a really good end result where everybody is happy at the end.
I know that when, as a former charter commissioner, along with my colleague Janice Hahn and Nick Checo, we thought that the neighborhood council would bring communities together and unite them and create a positive environment. And during our debates, discussions, we never envisioned that it would turn into what we see happening, border wars. And as we continue down the process of certification and the border wars continue, I know you don't have a budget to have arbitration, mediation, but we did not want to build into a system, a process to create more unhappiness and more dysfunction. We tried to create unity and a content attitude. So, something has to be done somewhere on the line in your department, and I know you got your hands full, to get those matters resolved and to come to some completion so it doesn't continue. But when I saw it on the agenda, I was basically startled and puzzled, because if it fails there, then we're going to inherit. And then what are we going to need Department of Neighborhood Empowerment for if we're going to start setting up the boundary? So, I encourage you with your dedication, although you've been in the city for a long time, and you've studied neighborhood councils up and down, and maybe some of the other cities around the country have a better process, but somehow we need to come to some resolution to make sure that it doesn't turn into more conflict and more dissatisfaction, because that was never, ever a plan, and we never even discussed to get into the arbitration or mediation. We never envisioned that would be a concern.
We accept that challenge, and every one of these that we go through, we're learning more and more about how to make the process go smoother and to produce satisfied people.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Hahn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to thank everybody for taking the opportunity to come down here and express your opinions. And as has been said, you know, this is clearly something we have never embarked on before as the city of Los Angeles. It's a revolutionary idea to empower communities and neighborhoods to make decisions that impact their lives, to weigh in on issues locally, nationally, at the state level. And I do realize that some of these emerging neighborhood councils are going to be experiencing growing pains. I just, for the record, want you all to know that as one of those who on the neighborhood, on the charter reform commission really championed neighborhood councils in the city of Los Angeles, it was my purest goal to really have neighborhood councils become empowered really outside of the city council, really outside of a particular council district. It was our goal that neighborhood councils could be empowered to really change the future of their neighborhoods, irregardless of who was on the city council, irregardless of who their council member was. This is truly an empowerment of neighborhoods. It will never be my intent to have our body as a city council really insert ourselves in decisions that our neighborhood commissioners are making. It will never be my intent that we insert ourselves in boundary disputes. I think there would be nothing worse, and it would be a path, in my opinion, that would not be the right way for us to go, particularly so early on in this process. We have, you know, 20-some neighborhood councils certified. We're hoping to have 70 by the end of the year, you know, up to 100 next year. This is the wrong thing for us to do, is to get involved in the boundary disputes. What I think is frustrating is, you know, neighborhood councils are going to have huge visions. They're going to have huge goals in what they're going to be working on and doing. We're going to be giving money to neighborhood councils to improve their neighborhood. Ultimately, I think the boundaries will be less important. As you move forward to really understand what your mission is and what kinds of things you can begin accomplishing, it will really have much less to do with your boundaries than your ultimate vision for your neighborhood. And just because across the street may not be in your boundary does not mean that you cannot weigh in on that issue or ever, you know, voice your opinion to the city council about something that's happening across the street from the boundary of your neighborhood council. Clearly, you are a stakeholder almost wherever you want to be in this great city of Los Angeles. And hopefully, when we move forward, you'll begin to understand that we have great ideals for you, great dreams for you in terms of what you can accomplish. So, I think unless it was an absolute disaster or emergency, I will never vote to insert our jurisdiction in the Department of Neighborhood Councils or into the neighborhood commissioners. I just think that's the wrong way for us to go. And hopefully, Greg, you will take this challenge and really try to solve these problems. Let's try to move beyond boundaries and get to really empowering these neighborhood councils in terms of what they can accomplish.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. The chair recognizes Councilmember Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, first, I wanted to thank all the community folks that came today. It's past noon. We went through a heavy debate, but the fact that they were able to come in here and voice their concerns and opinions about representing their respective neighborhoods is truly a good sign as to how we can continue to evolve as one city. The other issue here is that I'm hoping that we understand that there will be tension between business, residencies, apartment owners, tenants, homeowners. That tension is going to be natural in this process. But the fact that we are able to give, regardless of how this tension is evolving, the respect that the neighborhoods deserve, and that we do not impose our jurisdiction in an issue where allowing the community to define themselves is very important. So I just want to thank Councilmember Perry for receiving and filing this item, and we maintain the integrity of the process that was intended. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. The chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
I just want to thank Mr. Reyes. I was going to thank Ms. Perry for receiving and filing this item. And the receiving and filing means that no action will be taken, so therefore you are not to be included as one neighborhood council or in another neighborhood council. What we do as elected officials, once we get requests from one council or from one individual or from one community, another community, we just address the issue by bringing it to the council. And then we weigh support for it, or support against it. And it was clear that support was not there on this item. Ms. Perry did what we, each of us would do, and that's receiving and filing and not even consider it at all. But you had an opportunity to express your point of view or your opposition to it, if it were to be seriously considered, which it were not. And so, thanks for coming down, and your voices were heard on this issue. I might say, though, for future issues that will come up, be assured that even within your own respective councils, you will not have a unanimous vote. There'll be people on one side of the issue and people on the other side of the issue. And then, of course, depending on the neighborhood, the ethnicity, how much money they have in the neighborhood, how they think of their neighborhood and so on. Well, some neighborhood councils don't want affordable housing, don't want senior housing. That'll be, that's a shock to you, because I know you do, and I know you think a need is there. But some of them, other neighborhoods, don't want that. Now, the big fight's going to come up when we have a $100 million trust fund for affordable housing, and then some of these council persons saying, "Let's have affordable housing." And the neighborhood council says, "No," then that's a real problem. It will exist. So as they give you these speeches about how great it is to have a neighborhood council, how great it is to have the council having some input into what we do here in government, when there's a, when the head's butt, that's what happened. Nothing is going to happen that the neighborhood council wants. It's going to be what eight votes want, or what 15 votes want. You can shake your head all you want. I'm telling you right now that the situation will occur in which that will happen. You must understand what authority you have. The authority, what you have is really no authority. And I've been saying this from the very beginning. Neighborhood councils just recommend, they don't mandate anything of the council. Would you say, is that a yes or no answer, Greg?
They recommend.
They recommend. So, it's one thing you'll get from this council person, is the truth. I will not deceive you, will not lie to you. I'll tell you what the facts are. There's no power you can recommend. We're glad you come together so we'll know what the neighborhood is thinking. And in my district, I reflect what my neighborhood councils think. I respond to what they need, and I would hope that the other council person would do the same. But I'm saying to you, I've seen situations where that has not been the case. And so, don't be disappointed when it's not.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. The matter is now before us. We have the motion by Ms. Perry recommending we receive and file the motion to assert jurisdiction. So we have the, open the roll.
No, we're not.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're receiving.
No, we are receiving and filing. The motion is to receive and file. So the action would be to approve the motion before us to receive and file the action, letting the Board of Neighborhood Commission decision stand. Open the roll. Open the roll.
It's just, you voted against receiving and filing? Well, go vote against it, didn't you?
All right. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes, 1 no.
You did.
All right. That matter was approved, meaning that the Board of Neighborhood Commission action has been sustained, so the neighborhood councils, as recommended by the board, are in place. Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
Yes. Could I have an introduction?
The chair recognizes Mr. Labange for an introduction.
Joining us today in city council chambers after visiting with the mayor and one of the mayor's youth forms in council is from the Constitutional Rights Foundation students from Crunchell, Locke, Monroe, Belmont, and Garfield High School. They're taking time today to learn about the process of government and your engagement. And I will tell you, I once stood where you stood as a member of Tom Bradley's youth council. So one day, I hope one of you stand where we stand and listen to the people and act on their behalf. Please welcome the Constitutional Rights Foundation for their special program with Mayor Han today. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Clerk?
Madam President, items numbers 21 through 22 are closed session items. Do you wish those to remain on the desk?
Yes, let's have those remain on the desk.
You also have a special meeting that is currently pending with two items on it. Do you wish to recess this meeting and?
Yes, we will recess the regular council meeting to go into the special council meeting and consider that agenda. Please, Madam, Mr. Clerk, call the roll. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Bernson, Glanter, Garcetti, Gruehl, Han, Holden, Labange, Ms. Causi, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley, Thomas, Weiss, Zine, Padilla, 10 members present in the quorum. Madam President?
All right. The order of business?
Items numbers 1 and 2 on the special meeting agenda are items which public hearings have not been held.
There are no cards submitted for the special items 1 and 2, so the public hearing is open and closed. Those matters are now before us. Does any member of the council wish to call item 1 or 2 special? Seeing no members asking for those, those matters are now before us. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. We will now adjourn the special meeting and go back into the regular meeting of the city council. I'm also going to ask the members of the council, we are now down to 10 members, so that's a bare quorum. We need to stay in session to complete the agenda. What is the wish of the council? We have some, we have the public comment period still to occur, and we have the special Let me go ahead and call the public comment speaker cards then. We will have a 10-minute public hearing. Could I please ask the speakers to be concise? Ms. Hawkins?
Yes.
Okay, you want to come forward and speak? There, we've got 10 minutes, and we've got five cards, so if you could only take two minutes, please.
Okay, thank you very much. Again, I'm concerned about the redeveloping of old buildings. I've been looking very closely at the building on Wilshire, near my Arthur Park, is being redeveloped. And I'm looking at the danger and the crisis that America in and the budget cut, and the danger of redevelopment is concerning of the floors. You know, they're redeveloping on the outside, but we're not really definitely sure what is going on on the inside with the floors, because you can't cut inside of a floor and go deeper and have land under. We're not sure who might be going inside of the floor under, so we might consider building new. I'm with building new buildings, breaking down the old buildings and building brand-new buildings, you know, all the way to the soil, the oil, the gas, I mean, the ground, everything, renew. I'm standing on that. And also, in the downtown area, as a redevelopment, I believe it's too stuffy, too crowded. It's already 100 buildings I'm looking at downtown. I believe we should build new buildings in the southwest division. I am in District Number 8, and there's a whole lot of room in that area as a building, a stadium. Those that are with me as concerning not redevelopment, I believe that they should be rewarded.
All right.
As a new stadium area, as a reward in them because it's too stuffy, like we have too many buildings. If we build brand-new buildings, a brand-new football field, our basketball field or whatever, track or whatever, we cannot build it in something that already have 100 buildings.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. Let me call some of the other people who would like to speak.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Mr. Shapiro, Leonard Shapiro, who will be followed by Tutte Hayes.
Madam President and city council members, I would have liked to have addressed you on that CRA matter when you were discussing it for two hours, but I guess you didn't have three minutes for me. I have no illusions that the few words that I would have said would have helped anybody change their minds. Your minds were made up, you don't really know what's happening, and you're still going along because you think it's the only ballgame in town. You know, like I said before, when you have the Alameda Corridor, $2.4 billion, go through without a CRA, without a bond issue, without anything, then you get in, how does government work? The CRA works because it's easy. It's easy to form a $2 to $4 billion. But what are you doing with this action that you've taken today? You are helping the secession movement. Anybody who was involved in secession can easily understand what's happening. Here you are, in effect, passing a $2 to $4 billion bond issue. You're giving the CRA, which has a checkered history at best, you're giving them a go-ahead to go ahead and do all this stuff, and you think that'll have no impact on secession. You say, after all, all the money will be recovered from the project area. But if it isn't recovered from the project area, then the city council, then the city is responsible. Now, when you talked about this project, the big point that was brought out is you will produce. What did Jan Perry say? 12,900 units of 3,400 low cost. Well, what does the record show? The record shows that from 1967 to 1987, in a 20-year period, the last time anyone did any kind of audit of the activities of the city council, in that 20-year period, the CRA produced with all the money that they had available to them, 21,000 homes, and in the process, they destroyed 13,000. They produced 8,000 effective homes. And in the same period of time, the CDD produced 33,000 homes in 10 years, not 20 years. In 10 years, they did that. So you know there's an alternative here. Why do you give the CRA this money and the license to build homes when they have proved to you that they can't build them? The Alcesa report, which everybody should keep in mind because it's the last report that was done on public housing and low-cost housing in the city of L.A. Understand what they say. They say the CRA is not to be trusted. The only way you can assure low-cost and very low-cost and moderate-cost housing is to make an agreement with the builders, and no agreement, I shouldn't say no, very few agreements have been made, very few. If they're supposed to get low-cost housing for about 5,000 units, they get it for 1,000 units. It's all in the record there. Now, why, their recommendation was made by Zev Yarastas at that time?
Mr. Shapiro, can I ask you to sum up, please? We have others who would like to speak.
Yes, I'll bring it back. I understand how this council operates. You operate on the lack of knowledge. You don't want too many people like me talking to you to give you information. I know I need 30 minutes to present this project properly, but it can't be presented, and the very fact that you have passed this project for $2 to $4 billion in downtown L.A. is going to help the secessionists no end.
Mr. Hayes?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Mr. Pacheco, Councilmember Pacheco required the CRA to come back. He's not listening. Thank you. And give him a report on the fact that you, that's what CRA alleges, have absolutely said there'll be no homeless represented on the project area committee. I didn't hear anything. Was that by design, whatever? The most important thing that I have to say about homeless people who I represent on the Los Angeles Homeless Service Authority is that one elected official has had the integrity and honesty to state it as it is. He says there's no such concern for homeless people about low-income housing. It's about no-income housing. That's why Sheriff Baca is building a facility, which is called the Safety Facility, near the county jail, because that is for people who have no-income housing. You're concerned about SRO housing? Well, you have to pay to be an SRO. Ask Bud Hayes, my namesake, about that. No-income housing is what you have to look at, something like you have with our drop-in center on downtown, as well as the sheriff's aspect. But the most important thing is, you cannot go ahead and allow this PAC to refuse to allow homeless membership making decisions about them. I keep hearing Jan Perry say homelessness, homeless people, over and over again. She's milking us, she's riding our back, but she refuses to do anything to assist us in representing ourselves and having a voice in this multi-billion-dollar project. I suggest you ignore her lack of activity and take a step to see to it that the law is changed, that you created, that will not permit homeless people to sit on the PAC.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. The next speaker is Michael Hesron St. Hill, and then Richard Smith is the final speaker.
Glad to bless America. My name is Michael H. St. Hill. I want to say you have a Mexican city council, a new interim police chief to do something that corruption in the central division. When you have, and also the helicopter division, when you have a police officer who can rent storage space to, and fill the storage space with stolen merchandise and drugs and whatever, this is corruption. You need to, beginning from the senior officer to the sergeant, to the captain, something needs to be done, and start with at the helicopter division and central division. Also, I invite the council to come to the areas between 7th and 3rd and Main and Central and take a look, not drive through, just walk through, and see what these homeless bums are doing. I mean, they're not, these are people on the street, have no idea or sense or wants to get involved with the city or do something good. You have volunteers to come through, and we can clean the trash up they put on the street and all the filth they put on the street. They, it's a trash they put, they put there, yet you do nothing about it. You have laws, you have laws to prevent this, but nothing gets done. The police department just chased them on to another block, and they set up another block, not permanently moving them on.
Thank you. Mr. St. Hill, can I ask you to conclude? We have one more minute left and one speaker.
Yeah, this is not right, and you got to come through and smell all of the vermin that's going on and all the stuff. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next and final speaker in public comment is Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. My name is Richard Smith. On April 27th, I attended the meeting of the Board of Neighborhood Empowerment, Dunn, and their commission at the Holy Hill Church. At that meeting, the representative for the proposed neighborhood, downtown neighborhood council, Mr. Mike Gagan, during the meeting, got up and withdrew their application. This action was ignored by the commission on the basis of the city attorney's verbal opinion that he could not withdraw his application or their application unless they were decertified. There were several of us in the audience that believed that this was a bogus opinion based on the fact that you cannot decertify something that has never been certified. The commission moved on with their business. 30 minutes later, Mr. Gagan got up again and requested verbally that the action be withdrawn. Again, the commission ignored the plea. My question to the council is, how can we as participants in the audience at a commission meeting question the city attorney's opinion, the verbal opinion, when the commission wouldn't recognize anybody in the audience for any of this type of action? Again, one other point I would like to make, that at that commission meeting, the audience was allowed to swirl around the commission table in a confused manner, and therefore there was no order, there was no gavel, there was no sergeant-at-arms to conduct that, to help conduct that meeting. Therefore, I think, believe that was the basis for Councilwoman Perry's motion today that was withdrawn and received and filed. There should be some type of order and an ability of someone in the audience to get up and say, "I believe that there was a wrong action taken."
Mr. Smith, I'm going to ask you to. Thank you. I appreciate those comments. We'll refer that to the Neighborhood Empowerment Board. Members of the council, that closes the public hearing. We are now going to go into closed session for matters that are on the agenda but are supposed to be conducted in executive session, so I'm going to ask the members of the public who are present to please vacate the chambers so that we can go into closed session. Mr. Clerk, what do we have before us?
22B, recommendation of the city attorney to settle the case for an amount of $275,000.
22B is now before us. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
9 ayes, 1 no.
That matter is approved. Next item, I think 22C.
Item 22C, there is a motion on the desk to authorize city attorney to expend $1.3 million in settlement of case.
Okay, 22C is now before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
9 ayes, 1 no.
That matter is also approved.
Do you wish these to go forth with?
Yes, please have both those items go forth with.
The motions are posted and referred. Councilmembers' request for excused from council attendance, Councilmember Reyes request to be excused on May 15th for city business, this meets policy.
Councilman Reyes is excused on the 15th?
Councilmember Ms. Causi requests to be excused on May 15th, 22nd, 29th, and June 26th to leave at 11:30 for LAFCO business, which is city business. Motion is, this meets policy.
Those arriving, leaving earlier, leaving later, is approved?
And Councilmember Bernson requests to be excused on Friday, June 21st for city business, this also meets policy.
Councilman Bernson is excused.
The desk is clear.
The desk is now clear. Are there any announcements of the members of the council? There is an announcement, Mr. Labange.
One, that this Saturday is Fire Service Day throughout Los Angeles. All the firehouses are open, and to visit our local firefighters and enjoy and learn about their jobs and their great service to our community, all city fire stations. First started in 1958 as a tradition of the City of Los Angeles Fire Department.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Zine also mentions paramedics are part of that open house. Are there adjourning resolutions?
I'm, Madam.
So there's another announcement, Mr. Pacheco.
Madam President, we're going to start Budget and Finance at 2:15.
2:15, Budget and Finance Committee will start. All right, if I can ask everyone to please stand for adjourning motions.
Madam President?
I'm sorry, another announcement, Mr. Holden?
You mentioned the paramedic program. You just cannot just say "paramedic program" without mentioning Supervisor Han. I mean, let's tell it like it is. When they try to kill off that program, not just one nationwide, the fact that when he had three votes and people who died who did not live and never witnessed thereof, it's a wonderful program, great idea from a guy who knew, had a vision, so I think it's important to know that.
And I'm the poster child for the paramedics.
That's right.
15 years ago, a couple of days ago.
That's right. When you came to, first vote you took in council was a vote against the Fire Department. I remember that. I couldn't believe it.
All right, if, again, if you can have the councilmembers stand and everyone else in the audience. in the audience for the adjourning motions. Chair recognizes Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is for Councilman Burnson, who asked if I would adjourn the council today in memory of Dorothy Litzinger, who is a cousin of Councilman Burnson's wife, Robin, who died in April 2002, survived by her husband Roy and three children, Bill, Joe, and Rosemary, for, if we could, for tributes and if we could adjourn in her honor. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to ask that my colleagues join me in adjourning today in memory of two individuals who dedicated much of their civic time to the Anti-Defamation League. Misha Apter was a longtime member of the Executive Committee and the National Commission of the ADL, and David Fox was for many years a member of the Regional Board here in the Pacific Southwest region. And I ask that my colleagues join me in adjourning in their memory.
All right, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Council is adjourned.
Hey, Ruth?